I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Aldermen, New Bern Board of Aldermen Budget Work Session together here, April 30th, 1:00. That is time as you would join me in a word prayer. Heavenly Father, we just ask as we do your work that you would instruct us to do the things that would be in the best interest of our city that we all love and that would be those things pleasing to thee. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country? A pledge of allegiance to the black of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey. Alderman Dest. Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay. Now, before we get going, does any Alderman have any, anything concerning the workshop session they want to talk about or things they want to bring up at a certain time or any instructional items?
No, you know, I do want to, I guess, not belabor the process. And, you know, we all should have done our homework by now. I can't say I've totally done my homework, but I don't need a dog and pony. I think you all will agree. I think we should, you know, go through them if we have questions and then kind of pull out things. I assume we're going to go that mode rather than each individual department coming up. I thought we kind of handled that under our retreat.
My, I work for the board and whatever the board's pleasure is. We can go page by page or we can go department by department. My thoughts are as departments kind of were able to present, you know, some of their initiatives. Some of their initiatives were supported in the budget, some of them weren't. You've had the budget now for about a week to review and we can, like I said, I'm happy to do it however you want. We can get out of here in 30 minutes or we can get out of here in four hours. It's just whatever the flavor of the board and I'm willing to do whatever.
Alderman Bingle, I did ask Mr. Stevens about discussion of the elevator at what time?
Yeah, that was part of, I have, I've written down a few things that I've got questions on, so.
And Mr. Stevens, you had mentioned doing it under public buildings or when did you, would you want to discuss that?
We can discuss it now, we can, under public buildings is fine. Ultimately, as discussed at our previous board meeting last week, this would be a project where I think we would probably establish a project fund anyways. We could allocate some money towards that. It would have its own project fund, which typically don't show up in these, in these budget documents, but it, we can, we can, it would basically be a transfer from a fund balance into a project fund to pay for either an architect or engineer to do a study on City Hall and where best to put in this elevator, what they would recommend, or whether that would be something that we want to look as a full-blown capital funding project, which we don't really know what the costs are until we get that.
Alderman Bingle, did you, any particular place you want to do that?
You know, no, again, I don't mind, you know, following your schedule. I don't think we need to go page by page unless any of the other Aldermen, but you know, if we want to start with, you know, general government and, you know, like Governing Board, are there any questions? You know, maybe go through there. Alderman Odom, how do you feel about that? I know you study it.
I'm good with that.
Excuse me?
I'm good with that.
I agree. I think we should just go see if there's any questions.
Yeah, and then when we get to those things, pull out those questions that we have.
Okay.
Mr. Stevens, if you would proceed.
All right. And if you don't mind while y'all are making comments and stuff, I will be trying to make notes if there's any changes that need to be made. So if I have to pause for a second to do that, I'll do, please bear with me. So as, as we discussed in the presentation and presented you a balanced budget, just some real quick highlights of the budget before I go into it, we've incorporated employee raises in the budget. We did have our...
Sabrina, we don't have a quorum.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
We, we did have a relative tax increase that was relative to us eliminating the stormwater utility. It is revenue neutral, so taking the stormwater utility, which people were paying as a fee, and incorporated that into a tax rate increase, that's equivalent to what that fee was citywide, so we've done that. The wholesale rate increases we discussed in, in April has been incorporated into this budget. We did not pass along a retail rate increase associated with that, so we have worked that into the budget. As I said, employee raises were incorporated into the budget and as much as we could, departmental requests, I will say that departmental requests were about $5 million, I think, over what our expense, or our revenue was projected to be. Revenue projections were down slightly. Sales tax was up, but the add-on was down, which is expected after a hurricane. Obviously, the taxable, taxable value of properties went down due to some of the damages and people were requesting a revaluation of their home post the disaster, which we, we kind of expect those to come up. Mr. Ruggieri gave me some good news right prior to the meeting. He indicated that this month we had 31 new housing starts, which is a record here in New Bern for a month since, I guess, you've been here at least and I've been here. So that's a, that's a good sign. Obviously, our new housing starts are critical in the growth of our city economically wise and I think that's a good thing. So what I'll do is if it's okay with the board, amenable to the board, I'll just go through all of Section A and kind of generalize as much as I can. And if you have questions, I'm happy to do so. So we'll start on page nine, eight, nine, which is the Governing Board. That's the first section you come to. Really not a significant amount of changes other than the travel and training budget. The travel and training budget was incorporated for some based on the travel expenses that they plan to incur. Normally what we did is we had $2,000 per Alderman and y'all have been kind of borrowing from each other and things like that. So we kind of did it like departments requesting travel and we incorporated those into the budget. So, so there's been some, several changes there of note. Also, IT restricted count, you'll see an uptick in that. That was primarily because we're going to replace the iPad that you have. Some of, they're starting to get older and towards the end of their life, so at that point, we're going to replace those. And we did not incorporate any kind of board increase into the budget. We feel that that's a decision of the board if they so choose to do so. And in your packet, the supplemental information you see regarding the travel and training request for each one of the Aldermen is included in your packet. So that kind of briefly covers the Governing Board.
So questions?
Okay.
I want to go back to the first board, travel and training. So this includes our discretionary monies?
No, it does not. Discretionary money is in special appropriations, which we'll cover here in a few minutes. So you have two separate accounts. You have a travel and training budget, which basically you use for if, if...
You know, you go to a meeting or something like that.
You go to a meeting out of state, you need flight, you need bus transportation or whatever it is, car transportation, whatever it is that you need, that comes, and conference costs, that comes out of this budget. Your discretionary money is in special appropriations and each of you are allocated, I think, $1,000 for that and that was incorporated in the budget as well. Generally, those are spent on initiatives, I think, Alderman Bingle, since you raised the question, I think when, when you were previously an Alderman, you spent on some doggy bag stations.
Correct.
In places like that.
Things that would enhance the...
And it's kind of something that can enhance and benefit all of the public. And JR has some specific criteria that have to be met for those discretionary funds to be used. That was the direction and from the board that we got probably, what, four years ago, I guess, JR, five years ago about discretionary spending?
Yeah, and actually, we set the policy probably about a year ago now, I think, is when they ported up the new policy.
My other, my other issue, and we've done this in the past, you know, as I've looked through the budget, I found our little squirrel holes, $1,000 here, $2,000 there, which could add up, but like under advertising, you know, the actual we spent in '17, '18 was $843. The estimated for '18, '19 is $12, $12, we still ask for $4,000. Why wouldn't we ask for $2,000? Take that $2,000 and, I know it, they're pennies, but I think they add up.
Well, it varies and the reason, I mean, keep in mind, we're producing a budget here to try to stay within. It's not a, we can't necessarily predict what advertising we're going to do, so we have to put a budgetary number. If we have a year where we have to advertise a specific event that's going on, that would come out of this budget that may be outside of a departmental function and specifically with the sale of properties comes out of here. So depending on what sales of properties we have, how many times it gets into upset bid process, every single time we advertise it, it comes up. Right now, we have a piece of property that's over on National Avenue that's in the upset bid process. It's gone through, what, about four or five iterations now, Brenda? So every time we do that, that's another $300 that we have to spend advertising. So if it goes five iterations, we're at $1,500 at that point. So we can't really predict and also considering the fact that you're looking at, you know, various initiatives with, you know, potentially liquidating some properties, I think now that we've kind of said, hey, we're not set, we're, we're planning to sell properties outside of the choice neighborhoods area, which the choice neighborhoods area properties are intended to go right now or may go to the Redevelopment Commission if that's the board's choosing, that anything outside of that city owns that we advertise has to come out of this. Any kind of special meeting notices has to come out of advertising.
Mark, when, when and if the board decides to convey property within the Redevelopment Commission's boundaries to the Redevelopment Commission, would they then be responsible for any advertising?
If, if, if the statutory requirements say that they, I would imagine they would have to do that, yes. That would be incorporated into their budget. But I'm, I'm sure that they, they, they may be held under a little bit different standards. I know when they work with certain developments and those, or developers, they, they may be under different statutory requirements. I'd need to check with Scott on that.
But if, you could probably go back, I was able to go back to other budgets, whatever, and we never seem to spend more than $1,500, so I was just curious. I just highlighted that and that's fine.
I'm happy to cut it, whatever, whatever you want to do.
In case you need to find, you need to find some extra squirrel money, I think it's in that line, Alderman, it's not a lot of money, but it's there.
And, and keep in mind, you know, oftentimes, these are considered pools of accounts, so when we have pools of accounts, if you overspend certain areas, you can actually pull without doing budget amendments every single time and having to bring those before the board. So those are some of the things that we do. You're able to do a, a budget transfer, which I can approve administratively versus doing a budget amendment, which requires the board to do.
And then my only other question is on dues and subscriptions, is on the Eastern Carolina Council. I'd be curious to know how much we really do get out of that. I know they, they've helped us a little bit with the EDA grant, you know, is that something, you know, we're in the MPO now, it just seems like that organization has been more fulfilling to small towns and other areas other than what we have and $10,000 is a big chunk. I don't know, I mean, I want somebody to prove to me or say to me, this is really necessary, Sabrina.
Yeah, we, we're happy, I'm happy to have, Judy Hills came several years ago, I think it wasn't Judy that came several years ago to present to the board. I'm happy to have whomever the new director is come and, and give their spiel, but...
I don't need their spiel, I want to know what the sit, what the staff's spiel is, really. I mean, for $10,000 that we're paying them a year, do we use $10,000 worth of services?
The services, the services that we get through EDA, I'm sorry, through the EDA grant that we receive for them, we're actually paying for. The $10,000, $10,607, you know, we, you're right. I would say from a, from a municipality standpoint, we are a full service. We have the staff to support the things that we need to do, so the utilization of Eastern Carolina Council of Governments is very limited as far as our use.
Yeah. I was just curious if, you know, in what Mr. Ruggieri was doing with either the EDA grant, but if you say that's covered, or with the Redevelopment Commission, if we need them. Otherwise, I would really want this board to consider, get some more information if it's truly necessary. You know, we're in MPO, we're in other organizations and that's, again, $10,000, we could move somewhere else.
And I'm sure they would love to have that information as soon as possible if we're planning on pulling out of it, because that's a pretty, I mean, we're probably one of the larger municipalities that support the Eastern Carolina Council.
I don't know, does anybody have any experience? Mayor, do you have any other experience with them or?
No, no, I mean, what I've seen from meetings and things is that they obviously fit a model for a much smaller LaGrange or a small town.
And a farm goal, places like that. You know, Jones County, I know they are very helpful in those areas, maybe Pamlico County, some of those things, but I don't, is Craven County a member?
I'm, I'm not sure we do all of them.
Okay. I would like you, I would like for you to look into that, that would be a question unless there's strong opposition from anybody who's a member.
Well, what you'd like is maybe a volume contribution, kind of, maybe for tomorrow's workshop.
Yeah, if we could just get an idea.
He could kind of tell us what we are...
I mean, again, we're not talking $100,000, I'm talking $10,000, but, you know, I like to pinch fingers. Okay. Does anybody, Alderman Odom, do you have any thought process, you don't impose it or get the information? Okay, thank you.
Okay. As soon as I can get that, I'll distribute that to the board. Any other questions on Governing Board? No, I'll move on to General Administration. This is basically the City Manager, City Clerk, PIO, Division of the Budget. We, I'm sorry, Assistant City Manager, Office Assistant Three. We have in the budget this year, you'll see, it's a pretty, a pretty significant decrease. We, we removed some items, lowered some items, travel and training still relatively the same. I go to some conferences and have to maintain some things with my accreditation now because I'm a, well, as of June, I'll be a full-blown credential manager. I'm right now a credential manager candidate, as they call it, but in June, I'll, I'll have all the criteria met so, to be a credential manager, so that I'll have to do some traveling to, to maintain that certification as well as my professional engineers licenses. But we have included Code Red under the contractual services we have as well as other professional services. All of the postage for outgoing mail for the city excluding your utility bills is covered within the Administration Department. And I will say that I propose to freeze the Assistant City Manager position until otherwise directed to do so differently. But that's pretty much the Assistant Administration in a nutshell.
Mark, the difference in numbers for head count is that adding an office assistant for City Hall? We have five and then we're adjusted budget for '18, '19 was three and the recommended budget's four.
Now, the, it's positions field. Currently, we have two vacancies. The Office Assistant Three position's vacant and the Assistant City Manager position is vacant. I'm actually reviewing some applications now. I may actually change the Office Assistant Three to an Admin Assistant, a little higher level just for that position. But ultimately, we're looking at a four, which would be freezing the Assistant City Manager and then all of the other ones would still be approved.
But we're looking at what we talked about, you know, maybe getting somebody that would be more project-based or...
That's kind of what I'm looking at, either Admin Assistant or Special Project Assistant, that kind of position right now is currently what I'm evaluating.
And so you've got money included in that for that?
There's money to cover that. Usually when we have vacancies with regards to positions, we cover them at the midpoint because we don't, sometimes don't know where they're going to come in at. So anywhere that we have vacancies in here primarily, other than some of the positions where you have a frequency of turnover, like the Police Department with frontline police officers and generally speaking, they're brought in at a lower level to start with because of their experience and, and education levels and things like that are, are a little bit less. So normally, we, we budget for things at about the midpoint if they're vacant positions.
It may not be a big number, but on the dues and subscriptions for several of them, there's, I'm assuming CM is City Manager and ACM's Assistant City Manager. I don't know if that would change since we're freezing that position, if there's any...
Probably, we could, I mean, we, I could probably cull that list down a little bit, but some of that, like the ICMA, I can tell you that ICMA Association would probably come down a little bit. The New Bern Military Alliance is pretty insignificant, but that might come down $100 bucks, $150 bucks, what, I actually said it's $175, sorry. City County Managers Association, that would probably come down a little bit as well, but we're talking about maybe a thousand or $2.
Mark, just for this, for FEMA purposes, not sure if you have, but not, you might want to mix up, but note that Code Red is something that's, we can do under CAT-B for FEMA, Green Berthel. Not sure if you thought about it or staff thought about it or not, but...
Right, yeah, I'm pretty sure that our FEMA folks have, we've discussed it.
We've got consultants and...
Yeah.
Okay.
But if not, we'll check, just to make sure.
Mark, we have another question under the service and maintenance contract, contracts. So estimated for this year is $71.93 and now we're at $11.753 where our, the lease program is stable. So is this service and maintenance contract on the copy and printer or is this other items we have service and maintenance on?
I think that, JR, is that copier printer in Munis?
That's, the difference in now is actually a full year Munis.
So this, the service and maintenance contract is for Munis then?
Well, the increase would be associated with Munis.
Correct. This also includes, it's Munis, Archive Social, which is for the social media, archiving, and Revise, which is our website.
Would that not be distributed across the different departments since everybody's going to be using?
It is, because administration is distributed across all the departments. So we have an allocation that y'all don't see in the budget that allocates departments based on, so if they're, if they're administrative related departments, say like IT, HR, finance, accounting, they get distributed based on an evaluation that gets audited as part of our audit process each year to make sure that our distribution is in line with how it should be. So from, from the accounting standpoint, it may be based on how many work orders come through the system. I can't remember, JR, what your basis was for accounting, but it could be based on that. Public buildings in, in, the Public Works Department actually gets allocated out a certain amount because they maintain facilities for all the different funds, water, sewer, electric, everything else. Same thing with administration. Administration gets allocated out to water, sewer, electric, solid waste, and general funds.
Okay, thank you.
If no other questions, I'll move on to the legal budget, page 26 in your budget book. Spoke with Scott. Scott has no increase for this year, so his fee stayed flat and our miscellaneous legal fees that we have for recordings and things like that that we need to do per year, that's included in this budget too, but that's pretty straightforward. Next budget is elections. We don't have an election this year, so you'll notice that's zero. Special appropriations beginning on page 30, that is where we have all of the Aldermen special appropriations. Each of you get allocated $1,000 that you can use, as Alderman Bingle put it out earlier. We also have there our contractual obligations for the Alliance for Economic Development, which is our C100, C1A, C100 Alliance, and the Public Library, which is a commitment that we have each year of $75,000. And then miscellaneous other items that you have down there and that's where the Community Development Fund that often the board references, that's kind of at the City Manager's discretion to use, that's where the Community Development money is, is held.
How much longer are we obligated with the library?
Yeah, the library.
Forever.
Be thankful that when they, they did the library appropriation, they said that was it forever because the lot, the county gave $75,000 at the time, the city gave $75,000. City said never to, boy, more than that, the county pays, at what, $1.7 million, something like that, $1.5 million. So we would have had to pick up half of that, so that's kind of in there forever, unless we want to change it and give them more money.
I'm on the library board, I'm supposed to ask that question.
JR, could you explain what 76410 is on page 31? Payments made on agreement?
Yes, sir, that's that development over there on Third, on Third Street. That's where we are paying for the economic development for that.
That was that match?
That match.
That we had to come up with? I thought it was 600 and something.
No, the, I think, believe what you're thinking of is the Columbia Development.
Oh, 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 I see.
Yeah. This was the, I'm sorry, Mark, I can't remember the name of the development over there.
Gaston.
Yes, Gaston, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on special appropriations? All right, moving on to PEG. PEG budget actually went down a little bit. It's just our professional services to maintain our public education and government channel and any kind of IT supplies that are needed. The majority of that is our remote broadcast from the people with Swagit who are recording this right now as we speak. Okay, moving on to the IT budget.
On the PEG, I've always been one that I would like to see more programming on the PEG channel, but it looks to me like more and more, Facebook is doing the things that the PEG channel, when we originally started talking about this, it just looks to me like the culture is such that if there's a spontaneous event or something, that people are probably more likely go to our city Facebook page to see activities or events. And it looks to me like more that for archiving purposes and for the public to know that we're very transparent, that the PEG channel more and more is serving the purpose of the meeting itself and for archiving, for folks to be able to watch our meetings. So, you know, I don't know what the board has any feelings about. I would just like to see more notices, acknowledgements of all the activities happening in the city. I think they won't particularly, probably belong in the Facebook arena than the PEG channel. So again, I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I follow you. So let's use an example. You know, we want to get the Housing Authorities meetings on our PEG channel. We haven't done that yet because it's going to be a matter of going to them rather than them coming here and doing something to capture that. So, you know, is that something we do, bring them a camera, whatever? We have a certain fee we charge them, we incorporate it, are you, is that the kind of thing you're talking about?
That would be a PEG channel.
Correct, that would be a PEG channel thing.
But I'm thinking like, you know, like when we have, like Trent Rose was out for a couple of weeks, things like that are very, things that might be happening spontaneous around the city.
We just do it on the Facebook.
Yeah, that would be a Facebook activity. So I don't really see growing the PEG channel myself.
Yeah, I know, not at all. But we do, I think you're right about the record. I like the fact, I don't know, can we just through YouTube have a record of the meeting so it's posted on our website? Because people like to go back and go through that, do we...
We have, we have a, we have a record on our website of every meeting that we have, video, minutes, whatever, so I mean, I...
But is that necessar, do we have to have the PEG channel in order to get that? Is that the question that you're asking?
But if you don't have the PEG channel, you don't have the revenue that comes along with it, right?
Right.
Then you've got to make...
And this is a revenue neutral fund. I mean, we get money for the PEG channel and we expend money for the PEG channel. So it's really an alternative, it's really becoming more of an alternative way in which we can broadcast special meetings and notices and things like that. Yes, I feel very strongly that social media is the way to, to get the message out there these days. However, we're, we're living in an environment now where people get it through a newspaper, people get it through a TV channel, people get it through social media, people get it through word of mouth. And so we're in a, we're in a timeframe where we've got to kind of cover all of those and, and we still post everything, pretty much everything that we post on social media to some extent, get some kind of notice on the PEG channel and, and maybe a little bit more on the, on the social media.
I guess, one, I think I'm trying to say is that I'd rather ship expensing items to the PEG channel other than the meetings and the money, if it's being spent on, that, that it would be spent more on Facebook activities as to current events within the city and acknowledgements of when parks are open and, you know, just a, I think there's a lot of things that we could be doing on, on Facebook that don't, I think PEG channel is holding us back from doing a lot more chronicling and, and current events activity. I think, I think, I think the PEG channel is kind of keeping us within a certain model that we could probably expand better on with Facebook.
So are you saying we need more funds put towards Facebook rather than...
Probably more toward, probably more toward Facebook and less toward the PEG channel. The way the trending is going that I see with PEG channels.
I mean, I still think we need the PEG channel because there's a demographic of people that don't utilize newspapers for Facebook and they watch the PEG channel to be able to watch the meetings.
And the problem with that is the part of the city that is not within Sunlink are, I just think you have a more universal ability to watch the city activities through Facebook than, than you do on PEG channel.
Right, less funding, but we still need to have the channel. I mean, I...
Yeah, I'm not saying do away with it, I'm just saying...
I guess not spending...
Put more activities toward Facebook.
Then you have to see if that money that's appropriated for the PEG channel can also be distributed towards Facebook, which it can't. be distributed towards Facebook, which it can.
Well, basically, you could take, and some cities do it, and, and some cities just to get two revenues instead of one like we get, they actually for eight hours a day post a, a, a live cam that, and at, somewhere in the city, and they can remotely change it around, and that qualifies for funding for a second PEG channel. The problem with that is most cable companies, in the case of Channel Ten, do not, or Sunlink, do not want to give up another channel. They didn't want to give us the one we got, so giving another one is, is, is going to be difficult to get. So I'm just kind of saying that other than our, our, our meetings and things like that, maybe the money would be better spent on putting current events on Facebook. It's just something we could look into. Mr. Stevens, do you have any comments on that? Or have you, in any of your meetings you've been in on state level, has this been brought up?
I mean, social media is, it's, it's, it's kind of the wave. It's, it's a way to get information out there promptly. We utilize Facebook, multiple departments, as well as the main city page. Police department has a page, fire department has a page, Parks and Rec has a page. So they're some of our forward-facing organizations, so they have Facebook pages. Instagram, we have, we have Twitter. So social media-wise, I think we're out there on all the different, I guess, social media outlets that are possible or that are effective for us to use. I think what I'm hearing is, is, is you'd like to see us post even more. And so if that's the case, we'll try to do so and incorporate that while maintaining our PEG budget. I think the PEG budget is, we get a certain amount of allocation from the state, we spend that allocation, it's a revenue neutral fund, you know, balance. We, we basically have a, a line item in our revenues that accounts for what we get from the state, and we expend that. And generally, it's, it's on our contractual services for SWAGIT to run our, our, our Facebook and do our, our video for our meetings, and also for any kind of equipment upgrades that we from time to time have to be able to maintain the channel.
I saw ahead, sir.
On that?
Okay. I'm going to the IT budget. As you'll see here, the IT budget personnel remains the same. It's lower in compared to our approved budget for the current fiscal year. There's a number of factors that contribute to that, such as lower projected maintenance costs. Some of these projects that we've actually implemented have helped reduce those. Infrastructure consolidations have been accomplished over the past several years, so that's the reason why we're starting to see some reduction in that. However, the amount of peripherals that we have, computers, monitors, security cameras, iPads, workbooks, everything that we have kind of increases, so obviously it takes a lot of personnel requirements for us to be able to maintain that. Our full-time positions are still currently the same, and, but, but at some point or another, we may be needing to look at an additional staff member in the IT department to help facilitate those additional peripherals that we have and all the different tasks that Tony and his staff are charged with each and every year. Capital items, we had two major ones, a core network switch, lease department, and host for high availability systems at forty thousand for that particular item. But those are pretty much the, the IT department in a nutshell.
I really ain't gotten into the total detailed breakdown of the, of the proposed one point six nine seven for that budget I was, you feel good about the equitable breakdown with the different departments, the way you have it structured?
Yeah, very much.
Have you reviewed that this year and made any adjustments?
Yep, every year we review the allocations of, to the different departments.
Any, any major adjustments that you need to know about?
Were we short-staffed, or did we have some staff out? And it's near about a hundred thousand dollars difference in salaries, is that?
We had, we, we had a couple of reclassifications, I think, is that right, Tom?
Yes.
And then obviously, excuse me?
We have a vacancy that we're hoping had filled in the next several weeks.
Right. So once again, when we budget these, oftentimes we budget for them at the midpoint, so, so vacancy, if you'll look at page thirty-nine, it shows positions filled at the time of the budget was six, funded for this year, seven. That employee may have been at a lower than the mid-grade, but we usually budget for it at the mid-grade. We had raises this past year, and we had a reclassification for a position due to the duties that they were doing, more, more leadership type duties, so we had a reclass on that. That would make the difference. All right, moving on. So I guess let's go real quickly, since these are also in our general government, one seventy-four in your.
Page one seventy-four?
Yes, page one seventy-four. This is your inter-fund transfers and transfer supports. Basically, there's just three online items there. Transfer to grants fund, transfer to public-private partnerships fund, and transfer to other funds. These are just a couple other little projects that we have. JR can probably provide some more detail if you have any questions, but for the most part, these are.
What's the detail, JR? Because I can't figure out where they went to.
Yeah, we have obviously fifty thousand dollars going to the grants fund, as Mark noted, five thousand to public-private partnerships fund. And the transfers to other funds, we have twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars going to the MPO, and we have thirty-five thousand dollars going to the solid waste fund.
You know, in, in the future, it would be neat if on the bottom, you could just break those down underneath that. It just makes it easier so we don't have to ask you those questions.
Yeah, you'd love to do that, do that.
Okay, moving on. The next item is contingency. Contingency is just where we have some money, oftentimes it's used to help balance the budget because it's very difficult, a hundred and twenty-seven million dollar budget to get it to zero every single time. So, and, and it's oftentimes used for minor budget amendments that we have where we may go throughout the year, where we need to pull some money from. So that's just used for that particular purpose. Generally, we start with around a hundred thousand dollars. We got to within about thirty-nine thousand dollars, so we balance the budget with contingency funds. All right. MSD fund, page four fifteen in your budget book. Municipal Service District is the MSD. It has its own fund. The reason is, is because they self-impose upon themselves an additional thirteen seventy-five per one hundred tax rate. And those funds typically are used for additional projects that they wish to do within the downtown municipal service district area. This budget is, is maintained by the city. They do have a, a group that meets to, to look at various projects and recommendations from year to year. They meet on a regular basis, typically monthly or bi-monthly.
Four times a year.
Four times a year. And so at that point, they, they kind of make some decisions, provide some recommendations to the board through Alderman Bingle, who's the World of One rep, which is where the MSD lies. So if there's any questions about the MSD budget, we're happy to answer those.
So you do see a decrease in the vat, is that due to the valuation, I guess, what you think is going to come offline or drop?
Yeah, that's correct. That's right. And, and keep in mind, even though we're seeing a reduction in the abalorms, I fully expect that to rebound next year as those properties are repaired and rehabilitated post the storm. Those reevaluations will occur again. They'll probably have even more value at that point because they'll have all new, new assets.
Well, because we've had a couple of new buildings rehabbed. So if you look at Cypress Hall, if you look at the Polos property, that's all new online, so those values should add to that, and they're paying MSD tax.
That's correct.
We want to, Tolson's building, that's all been rehabbed now, they're not vacant buildings, so I would think that would increase the value of it.
Sure. And, and once again, I'm, I'm not sure if the hotels at that point approached, they were damaged pretty significantly. Those are pretty large taxpayers within our municipal service district, so when, they may have requested some, some forgiveness, I guess, if you want to call it that, on the evaluation of the assessment of their property. So all of that kind of weighs in, and it's better to be safe than sorry, I guess, when it comes to budget. Any other questions on municipal service? Okay, back to page forty-four in our book. Page forty-four is development services department. Our development services department consists of our economic and community development. It consists of our public building inspections and our planning department, and also they have, Jeff has direct oversight of the MPO administrator and that fund as well. Pretty much, the budget was relatively flat. Personnel services, we haven't seen a lot of turnover in that department. Actually, I think you are full staff now, Jeff, is that correct? For the first time since a bunch of retirements occurred over the past year or two. So he's fully staffed at this point. Operating budget is up slightly, but remains relatively close to where our operating expenses were last year. Forty-five thousand has been allocated for the demolition of blighted properties. Thirty thousand dollars was added for some seed for the redevelopment commission, so that was included. And we put fifty thousand dollars in there for community rating, which probably is, we as a city are probably going to have to incur some cost for us to meet the community rating system to be one hundred percent compliant. And until we are one hundred percent compliant, they will not grant us that community rating. So that was one of the initiatives of the board from the retreat, they, that we adopt the community rating system and have staff expedite this process, so we wanted to make sure and put some funds in the budget so that we can continue that and get that taken care of.
How many homes are we talking now? Didn't we just?
I think there's eight to ten. So started with about thirteen, and we're starting to kind of shade some of those off due to either some of the things that we've been working on or some of the individual homeowners have been working on. So eight to ten is probably a good number to use now of where we are. Some of those will require us to potentially expend some funds in order to meet that one hundred percent requirement.
Are you comfortable with the fifty thousands?
I, I think so right now, and obviously if we need some more, we, we could.
I was thinking about less.
That would be nice, but I, I guess as far as budgeting, we, we, we probably need to leave it where it's at.
Okay.
Mark, a question for you, and Mr. Jerry might be able to answer this. The majority of the funds allocated for the demolition of blighted properties, would you say they're in the CNI?
Yeah, I would say that's probably reasonable.
So would you not combine that as part of the redevelopment commission's budget and put that all in there rather than have a separate, so we can really appropriate what's, what's going on in that area and, and look at that?
We could, but there's not a redevelopment budget to appropriate it to at this point. So we put it in here so that we have it budgeted, and then if, if that becomes the case where they are in the CNI area, we'd probably take a certain amount of that and put it in the redevelopment fund, budget at that point, which would be their budget. And that's the whole reason why we've got the thirty thousand for the redevelopment commission, as well as the forty-five thousand dollars for blighted properties. So I think that would be, be the intent.
At what point will you divvy it out? Because at some point, there'll be some revenues coming in, and they're, you know, and that's the, the general direction they're moving in for revenues coming in, grants, other things. So I think, just like we have an MSD budget, we should have a redevelopment commission budget.
I think it would be the intent of, they have yet to develop the plan. Once the plan gets adopted, we'll have a little bit better idea of what the program of work is going to be, and then I think it's better to, to determine that at that point. Otherwise, we're just, you know, throwing darts in the dark. I don't know, Jeff, you?
What's the projected debt service of ninety-nine thousand, six eighty-seven?
Included in that is the Bolt Center that will be, that we're going out for bid now, that's actually out for bid at the moment, should be backed to me by the end of the week.
What is it?
See, also, yeah, that's, that's the biggest chunk of that increase, about eighty-three thousand of that is Bolt Center.
But you're going out to bid for what?
Financing.
Financing the Bolt Center.
Excuse me?
The financing.
Financing? Oh, for the, for the, the six nineteen that we're, I mean, the?
Yes.
Six something that we appropriated?
Whatever we can reduce it by. But that, yes, for the six nineteen, I guess, whatever that number is. Any other questions on development services? Okay. Staff stayed the same as last year, and that's all I have for development services.
Hey, just one other question, I'm sorry. Under miscellaneous other service, you know, we've, we had one thousand, now we got thirty thousand in there? Is that the money, is that the thirty thousand you're putting in there for redevelopment?
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
And it just says miscellaneous other services. Shouldn't we title it as such so the public knows what we're doing? You know, miscellaneous just sounds so generic.
At this point.
Well, I don't understand that, but I mean, then somebody comes back to me and said, you know, did you appropriate money to redevelopment? Yes, thirty thousand. Well, I can't find it in the budget.
You go to them, they point it out.
Okay, well, that's fine, I'm just, just asking.
We, we made a point to point it out in, in, on page forty-four, and I mean, I guess.
That's fine, I understand that. I'm just, you know, just asking the question.
I do want to say something before you leave development services and the board's opinion on this. While we're waiting on the elk spilling to, something happened to it, it was wrapped. And I know we can't wrap all the houses and, throughout Newbury that have problems, but I, I'm getting more and more complaints about. And Mark, I've sent you several of them last day or two, about tremendous amounts of trash and discarded items throughout our city. And I know that we are precluded from totally demolishing homes in many instances, but it does look like the city, so we can spur investment in our city, could do more. I mean, who wants to invest in, on a vacant lot in the city where you got some of the discarded items and trash and debris and lack of mowing and things? And I'm, I'm just talking about this for a minute while we're at this budget item, that I don't, I don't want to be overzealous as a city, and I, but, you know, just like in the case of the Axe building here, we're doing our part to try to make something happen. So what, is there anything else the board could be doing? Stepped-up mowing, stepped-up removal of debris, and charging this back to the owners, and if they don't pay it come tax time, then we have recourse for that. But again, I just have had a bunch in the last couple of months of, of items throughout the city. There was one pretty bad case in Colony Estates the other day. I sent you that over the weekend. Does the board want to try to do anything different from what we're doing about this item? I, I don't think there's any legal preclusions for doing it, it's just a matter of do we want to do anything? The only other thing we've been doing is putting DSD officers out in these communities and having these cleanup days. Johnny Ray, we had, you know, somebody the other day in your, in Colony Estates, just had a bunch of, bunch of stuff out in the back rear yard, and somebody complained to me, someone took a picture of it and sent it to the city manager. Mr. Stevens, what do we do about a situation like that right now? What's the policy?
Well, that was forwarded on to Mr. Jerry's department. Mr. Jerry's staff went and evaluated, and they will be, I think you were copied on the email, they would subsequently be sending out a letter that they're not in compliance if they are found to not be in compliant. And at that point, we have to follow our protocols. If they don't mitigate it, then we're in the mitigated forum, then we put it as a charge. If they don't pay it, then it goes to the lien on the property.
I know, I know one man's trash is another man's treasure, I understand that, but same time, some of these homes right here, at the very least, if we, if, if they're structural integrity and such, can we have a stepped-up program of forwarding the homes up? Particularly the ones that the roofs are imploding and caving in, is there not some stepped-up maintenance or program that we can have to, to make, to make citizens want to invest in these lots that we're, we're maybe not stepping up to the plate and doing our job of?
If we're made aware of them, then we take care of them. If we want to add staff, we can add staff to take care of those.
Do we want to add a staff member?
Right now. Right now, uh, Matt, a lot of Matt's staff have been reallocated towards cleaning stormwater ditches. Uh, so if we need to switch them back to boarding up houses and, and evaluating those, we can do that. Or we can add staff so that they can continue to do the stormwater functions.
Yeah, I got a call too on, um, Darst. I think the city took a house down on Darst. Have we recently taken a house down there? So there's all stuff overgrown and whatever, so the citizen called to complain that the city needs to get back out there and clean up where we've taken the house down. I don't know if that means we've taken control of the property or whatever, but Darst, Darst is really bad there behind the old, um, Good Shepherd home. Lots of trash, and I mean, it just looks awful. We've got all these empty lots now that could potentially, like the mayor says, be development, and it really does look bad back there. You know, the issue is Nancy, I mean, they do an awesome job, she's incredible, but she's one person. And, you know, she gets the complaint, then she's gotta go and look at it, file the paperwork, have the hearings, and she's just not out on the road looking for these issues. It's gotta, you know, complaint driven, and then, I don't know, it might be worth it to have a temp, you know, once a week to drive around and try to look at areas of concern and just, you know, come in and do paperwork. I don't know if that's doable, but that's the problem that we have, we've only got one person to do that.
Not trying to be rude or not being disrespectful, but could we stay on task for this? And it's like, well, I'm just saying, like, anything in depth like that, like, can we just park and lot it? Cause we have a long budget and I wanna be able to get through it without, I'm gonna give one question. I wanna be able to.
I think, I think a lot of that problem is, might be a little better education. I mean, if, if this people, someone, the neighbor sees trash in the yard, they just need to know where to call and, cause as soon as I've called, I mean, I've called Jeff and, and even Matt several times and about complaints that I've received. And, uh, Jeff's been all over it and, and taking care of it right away. So, you just, if we let them know, if we let them know, then they'll get, get it taken care of. So we just need to let the citizens know if there's a, if their neighbor's yard is, or if there's an area that they see a bunch of trash, they just need to call in to the city and let us get out there and get it taken care of.
Yeah, that would be a good post, Colleen, that would be a great post on Facebook.
Any other questions on Development Services? All right, we'll move on to the next section, which I think is Finance. Uh, begins on page fifty-seven of your budget book. Uh, Finance Department, uh, stayed relatively flat. Um, we, obviously, one of the major highlights of our operating budget is a hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars as a contract of Craig County for our tax collections. The debt service and maintenance that you see, uh, that was added for this year is for our munis. Uh, and, and obviously that operate, uh, impacts all the other budgets as we've already seen, uh, through some of our other funds that we've already covered. Uh, but primarily, um, flat budget with regards to our finance, which includes, uh, accounting, the Accounting Department and Administration. Staffing stays the same as well. The Purchasing and Warehouse, uh, on page sixty-three, uh, once again, uh, relatively flat in comparison to last year. You'll see the debt service went up a little bit, that also includes the munis debt service. You'll see an increase in the Personnel Services that was due to, uh, a, a, uh, increase, uh, for a staff member, but you'll see the reducing, uh, amount, uh, pretty close to that in the operating budget, which was what we were allocating for that individual through temporary help services. So, uh, that person had been working, uh, I think, for the city for almost eight years now, or?
It was, that was for between Parks and Recreation and, uh, and Warehouse and, and other areas.
As a temporary employee, and that employee, um, had been working for us full-time plus overtime, uh, as well as, uh, basically worked throughout the entire hurricane, uh, while he was not necessarily required to as a temporary help service guy. So, uh, we, uh, being that we were utilizing that much, we made him a, a full-time employee.
Question for you, Mark, on the Cal Road rent, is the reason that the rent is going down is because the debt service is being paid off?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of that.
The Cal Road rent, the rent has been going down, is that because the debts, we're, we're basing the rent on the debt service?
That's correct.
Okay.
Each year, the first year's always the highest, subsequent years, your, your debt service goes down based on the interest. We can go ahead and switch over to, um, kinda switching funds, but staying within the Finance Department. The Utility Business Office, which is on page three hundred and eleven in your book. Utility Business Office, uh, consists of twenty-seven employees, that remains the same for this year. Relatively flat budget, uh, you'll see the increase in Personnel Services, uh, that was primarily due to, um, raises in, for this past year as well as the overtime budget, uh, some of the, uh, overtime necessary. We're seeing a little bit of slight uptick in that, um, particular line item. And, um, all the postage you'll see, uh, as we send out our mailers, we're having, uh, more residents, more commercial businesses come online. So, uh, we're seeing that kind of uptick each year. And obviously, our Utility Business Office, uh, will be incurring some of the, um, need to have a mobile workshop for our meter technicians whenever we implement our, or are in the process and, and completed now, I guess, our AMI implementation. So they'll need to, that meter van for, to be able to service those.
JR, JR shows that the credit card fees for prepay will be absorbed by the fund. Is that gonna be the case with anybody else that makes a payment with a credit card?
Not at the moment, but we're, that's something that we will need to, uh, need to review for FY twenty-one as we move forward with the, uh, modification of online bill pay as we move forward with munis. Because, uh, we can see if, uh, what the board's desire is on that. I believe, uh, the general intention was to absorb that, but, uh, we just need to confirm that with the board once.
It's actually beneficial for somebody to go on prepay versus just paying their bill every month with a credit card?
Yeah.
That's correct.
It, it's actually very beneficial because they also would have no late fees with PMP and interest as well, so.
That is definitely something we should consider, uh, in the future with regards to whether or not we want to absorb those fees. You know, ATMs charge fees, but do we wanna do that? Uh, we could also build that into the, uh, rate structure, um, for our electric, water and sewer rates and stormwater, or our solid waste rates, uh, so we could incorporate that there, uh, to try to build that in the budget, spread it across those funds. Cause anytime somebody uses a credit card, it's obviously, uh, paid for all of those typically. Some cases where they're outside the city limits, they wouldn't be paying for all of those, but.
So this is the online where if you pay with a credit card, it's four ninety-five and checking account is ninety-five cent?
Well, right now, we pass that along, but as four ninety-five, but as we implement the new system of credit card payment where people can utilize it on a regular basis, the question would be is do we absorb that or not?
So have we worked, are we to the point yet that it's integrated with munis? Or we still have to look at another third party to integrate that?
As far as the credit card charges?
No, the, the pay as you go.
Uh, no, the, uh, the pay as you, the pay as you go is going, there will be some integration that we need to, uh, continue to work on as we move forward with munis. We're real, we are really just now starting the utility billing portion of that project, so.
So did we ever hear back from Manassas? Cause I know they had the model, they were using munis, so, and I, I understand they had a few problems. So I wasn't sure if we had worked that out, if we were gonna have to purchase another software or whatever to integrate that.
Uh, I don't believe we'll need to purchase any other software to do any of that integration. We have, uh, there's, munis is working on a multi-speak compliant, uh, uh, upgrade to their system. But in the meantime, there's, uh, we have the ability to do a flat file transfer, so.
Any other questions on Finance Department? Okay, uh, we'll move along to Fire, and Fire can be found on page sixty-nine of your budget. Uh, just some highlights on Fire. Fire had, uh, it's a relatively flat budget, um, so to speak. Um, we did have, uh, some additional debt service, uh, most of that, um, was, uh, contribute, attributed to, uh, the addition of some capital items in this last year's budget, which will need to be budgeted for this year. Um, and also, you'll see the Personnel Services, uh, we did have some retirements, but as you remember, we added, uh, some employees last year in the, uh, Fire Budget. So you'll see an increase in the recommended budget for this year versus the seventeen, eighteen actuals and the eighteen, nineteen adjusted budgets. Uh, operating wise, we have PPE equipment replacements of forty-five thousand, uh, repairs and upgrades to our Thurman Road Station. Uh, obviously, our typical OSHA and NFPA requirements of medical exams, training, uh, repair and maintenance of some of our fire apparatus, uh, and our applicant process, uh, for accreditation of our Fire Department. Um, we do have one capital item in there, which is a heavy-duty truck to haul our wild, wild, wildland firefighting skid unit as well as a goose neck trailer, uh, so that, uh, now that we have the urban interface and being able to, uh, fight that fire, uh, it allows us to, to get that piece of equipment, which I think was being, uh, the state was giving us that piece of equipment. The goose neck from the state and the forklift. Um, obviously, you can see dues and subscriptions for the employees, uh, train, travel and training, lots of training in that division. Seventy-three employees, um, we have seventy-two of those field, um, as of the printing of this budget. And I think you're working on that one right now. And a lot of that's due to some retirements.
At the retreat, and just remind me, cause I could have been thinking of a different retreat. Did we not talk about funding some architectural services or doing something to look at future stations?
The motion that was made by the board, uh, was to, uh, for Chief Boyd and City Manager to expeditiously work on with our warehouser to obtain land donation for a fire station. It was first, uh, it was, uh, motion, but it was by you, uh, second by Kenzie, which carried unanimously. And I know that Jordan, uh, and Chief Boyd have been working, especially Jordan, on the site location, uh, out on forty-three connector, uh, where that will be, uh, because we want it to be a joint, uh, site where it's gonna have a water tower to provide for our water system as well as fire, uh, new fire station. Uh, but we, uh, we have not done that, and the reason why we didn't allocate, and I think if I recall, uh, was at the retreat, just like we're talking about with the Elevator Fund, once we do that, we would, it's likely that the land will be donated either by a warehouser or some other adjacent property owner. But Warehouser's been in, in discussions with us, and, uh, at that point, um, that, since it will be donated, it probably won't need the funds. However, once we get into actually doing that project and seeing that, we would set up a project fund and then ultimately allocate, uh, through that fund, some architectural and engineering services, and then, uh, ultimately roll that into the entire project for the capital.
I got a question for you. In the past several years, I, I think the, the Fire Chief has recommended that we look at replacing some of our fire apparatus. I know that we, we got a fleet that's aging quickly. Out of the seven fire trucks that the city owns, I think five of them are, are older than seventeen years old. And some of them are, we're getting on to twenty-five years old. I, I think it's, it's important, since it takes approximately a year to buy one of these things, I think it's important that we put funds in the budget this year, uh, to start replacing, by replacing one of our oldest fire trucks or the ones that's in the worst condition. Uh, and, and like I said, it takes a year for it to get here. So, I think it's getting time to look at replacing, I mean, we got some, we got a nineteen ninety-three model that's first runs. We got, um, some ninety-eight models, we got ninety-nine model, our aerial platform's a ninety-nine. It's the only aerial platform that we have. I mean, that is, that truck is gonna be, needing to be replaced, or at least refurbished, in the, in the next years, the next few years. So, instead of all of this ganging up on us, I would love to see us at least start ordering, uh, I don't know, Chief, if you need a, if you'd want an engine or a, a Quint, but we probably need to start thinking about ordering one. Again, since it takes approximately a year for it to be manufactured and delivered to us. Mister Mayor, what's your thoughts on that?
Um, it's overwhelmingly something without a lot of information, and a Quint would be about, what, six hundred thousand or seven fifty?
Yeah, I think you're looking at a half million, somewhere in that range for a, a pumper and seven fifty, maybe even better now. Do you know for a Quint? And all these, all these trucks that we're talking about there are, some of them are better than twenty years old. I mean, you start talking about a nineteen ninety-threes and nineteen ninety-nines and, you know, for example, the, the platform has thirteen thousand eight hundred hours on it, that's a lot of hours. And then you got eighty-one thousand miles on that truck, so.
I think you got a major capital outlay, outlay coming. I know that we, in retreat, started the process of, of looking at some volume engineering ideas to a split block or whatever, or similar type buildings, to what we just mentioned, the water plant, and we started, process is starting to talk about it, knowing that if and when that new, that new location is, um, on the forty-three connector, that you're gonna have a new truck at least or two for that.
Well, whether we, I mean.
Counting replacements. So, again, I think what you gotta do is, is systematically, um, and we can do that pretty quickly before budget adoption, but we're gonna have to sit down and, and look at the replacement stru-, uh, um, timeline as to what, what, what needs to go off. I know that.
Well, I, I think that's already been determined. I think your, your Fire Chief is already, you know, has, in, you know, in his capital plan, how, how, what needs to be replaced. But I'm just telling you, when you start running, when you start thinking about nineteen ninety-nine model trucks, there's not many nineteen ninety-nine model trucks running in inventory in City of Newbury today. And, you know, these trucks are very expensive, it takes, like I said, it takes a year for them to get here. And I just think that this year, we should let the Fire Chief go ahead and prepare bids and let's get one ordered. And next year, at this time, we'll be thinking about, you know, how to budget, our budget for it. JR, I, I talked to you about this, I gave you a heads up on this, and I was gonna, wondering, you know, how, how would you, how would we pay for something like that? Do you have to encumber the entire amount of money once the truck is ordered?
Uh, yes, sir, when you order, when you order, we would have to encumber the entire trucks, we have to budget the entire thing at one time. Be half a million dollars, uh, if you wanted, if you want to budget for it for next year, or for Chief Boyd to order it and put his contract on it, we would have to budget for it. Should we, should the board decide to do that, uh, I would, I would probably fi, I would finance it, uh, for half a million dollars. So that, uh, so there would be an offsetting revenue for FY twenty. However, we would have to, uh, for FY twenty-one, we would have to come up with approximately a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars uh, to pay for, uh, the debt service for that.
Yeah, well, I reckon it beats the alternative of one of these things blowing up and possibly hurting someone, and then we have to make some immediate purchases. You know, so, um, I don't know, is at this point, if, if I need to make a motion or if that, I mean, I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say about it. I'm just concerned about the Asian fleet. I mean, you got ninety-three model, you got two ninety-three models, a ninety-eight model, a ninety-nine model, and a two thousand and two model, and then a two thousand and six, and the newest model's a two thousand and fourteen. So this fleet is aging quickly. And we're gonna be faced here shortly with buying a bunch of them. So we now, we might as well start right away.
Well, let me ask you this, uh, back in your day, as Chief, you obviously, the way they're coming, gonna be going offline, you must have been buying quite a few of them at one stretch. Did you buy like three, four trucks in a three-year period or something?
Well, we bought, we bought two ninety-threes and ninety-eight and ninety-nine and two thousand and two during my tenure, you know, that was pretty quick, but that replaced some, some older apparatus as well. But, um, this is, in, in my opinion, this is pretty critical, and we're gonna either be replacing them one a year for the, you know, next few years, or we're gonna be replacing, having to buy two or three of them, you know?
The way that, when you buy a truck, do you, just like with, uh, the way I've always done building houses, do you pay so much down and so much at sequential periods of time during the destruction?
Sir, it depend, it depends on the vendor, the contract established. Uh, occasionally, yes, they'll, they'll ask for money down and then, uh, some progress billing.
Progress billing, okay.
It would just depend on that. As a matter of fact, actually, at one point, and not saying the. As a matter of fact, actually, at one point, and not saying that we would be able to do this here, but at a previous job, I was able to negotiate a, a lower price by an upfront payment. So that, that's a possibility.
That's, that's pretty typical, at least it has been, unless things have changed. I mean, once you place the order, if you want a reduction in the price, you can pay fifteen percent or twenty percent upfront, and then when the truck is delivered, you hand them a check.
What's the LGC approval process? How long does that take?
Would it take that long to get through, probably about four weeks? However, for a piece of equipment like this would not require LGC approval, provided that we keep it under five years.
And what would the payment plan consist of? Five-year note or what?
It'd be a five-year installment purchase. First year, first year would be a hundred and fourteen thousand, and then it would ratchet down from there all the way down to a hundred and two thousand in the, in the fifth year payment, so.
That's based on a half million dollar truck?
Based on a half million dollar truck.
Any other board members have any comments or anything, questions? Okay, from that retreat, what was our timeline on the, on the, we were starting to talk about the alternative F forty-three connector and the timeline on the capital improvement of that building and all, where we, we were like three or five years out, or is that what we were thinking? I don't have that right in front of me.
I don't recall.
I don't recall either.
I thought we made some headway when we hired more firefighters to be able to get the time down and something.
Well, no, that was, that was for the Thurman Road house.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not trying to get ahead of the game or digress from your concern. And I do know that maximal life expectancy is about twenty-five years is.
Well, twenty, twenty to twenty-five years.
And the oldest one is a year, one year?
Well, we have one of them, which is a service, is a ninety, well, we have a, we have a pumper that's a ninety-three model, and we have a service that's a ninety-three model.
Well, if you were buying that pumper today, would you get a pumper or would you get a quint or?
No, I think, I think you can get, we can replace this time because of the number of quints that we have. This time we could probably get by with a pumper.
And what, what's a pumper nowadays? How much?
How much?
Five hundred.
Is that, would that, would that be something you would think is what we need by, a pumper or?
Coming up by.
While, while he's doing that, question for JR, if, if we're keeping these trucks, obviously for a long time, can we finance it longer than five years?
Yeah.
It may require LGC approval, but can we do that?
It would require LGC approval, but we could, we could conceivably do that. We actually financed, I believe it was a ladder truck about six years ago, four, I think it was, maybe eight years. So we can, but that's a million dollar truck.
Chief?
Right now, right now, a pumper is what we need, because it's replaced our first out. One of our, one of my concerns is we recently had to wait thirty days for a part. Some of the parts are not even being manufactured, having to make them for harness on that particular truck. Somebody computer types drives on the pump panel or anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a piece, and they're just a matter of time for the fill, and that's what concerns us. But right now, an engine's what we need.
Okay, well, let's just, looking five years out, tell us what you would like to see the element consider as far as outlays.
And to answer your question about the station, we discussed a three to five-year window on that. But right now, we've got a apparatus that's, we've got two reserves, which is great because we still have one that's out from the flooding. It still has not gotten, we hopefully get it back any time now, it was damaged during the flooding. So that's have a reserve, kind of plays a that, and we've actually have one in the shop right now that's getting cab fixed on it, so we're down to have, have both our reserves and service. That's why the reserves are so important. And typically what you do is you'll take it, like for example, engine one, even though it's a two thousand and two, it's the highest run truck, so that's what needs to be replaced. And we'll move it down to reserves and then bump the bottom reserves out. But right now, we've got, in the next fi- five years, we've got three apparatus that need to be replaced.
And one of them being platform?
Yes, platform, the tower's what is the next one. It's the next highly run vehicles.
Let me ask you this, how much, let's say you needed two new pumppers in the next three years. What better deal would you get with a, with a manufacturer? You bought two at the same time?
I think that's definitely something we need to look at. I mean, I think anytime you got, we can save money and look at the big picture and look at, and I'm all about planning, if we can look, take, there again, like Alderman Astor was saying, it takes a year just to build a truck. If we can look at long-term, sit down and see all the things that we need replaced and try to put a package together, I'm all for that, but we've got to start moving forward.
Or at least at the same time, when you were buying one, if you sequentially purchased another one for the next ensuing year, is where you combine them in one sale and get a better price? Does that, does that work that way sometimes, Bobby, Bobby Alderman?
There's so, there's so many different buying plans out there, I think it'd definitely be looking at. But when you build a station, you know, originally I had discussed, you know, using, utilizing one of the reserves, but just because of what I've seen lately is needing those reserves, I think you need to plan on when that station being, being built, having another apparatus.
Are those ninety-threes the reserve trucks?
That's correct.
But they're running full-time?
Right now, they're in service.
Anytime one goes out for service or, or maintenance, the reserve goes in service, so the territory is not left.
And you want to keep about two reserves?
No, I, actually, I was getting ready to ask you, if one, if we were to purchase a new pumper, would one of those reserves be able to be sold?
Yes.
So. Well, what, what do you get for it? Seventy-five thousand dollars?
I have no idea. I have to look, I have to do some research.
Alderman Odom?
That was going to be my question. I was wondering if either Chief or Director of Finance could provide us with a net present value, evaluation of all our current fleet in the fire department, so we can see what we have about what it's worth. And then I would, I would recommend that, I don't think there's any cost other than the labor of staff time to put a bid package together and maybe do a bundle and then do them individually and just see what those prices are that we get back.
We can get some general quotes.
That's, isn't a problem. And just, just kind of make you realization of what's happening with our fleet. You know, ten years ago, you know, you could say twenty to twenty-five years, no problem. But now it's fifteen to twenty, and you take engine three, which is out to Elizabeth Avenue Station, it's a two thousand and six, it's almost got the same mileage as some of the, our other frontline trucks, they're ten years old.
Well, let me give you, ask you a hypothetical, let's say that we have to get a budget approved by June thirtieth, let's say that August fifteenth, the board makes a non-executive decision, but a decision to, to go with a new pumper. The only thing it could effectively affect, affect would be the fund balance. So at that time, could we do, we, we would just do a budget amendment?
It, in, in reality, Mayor, it would not affect the fund balance either. Yes, it would to some extent, but you're going to have an offsetting revenue because you're going to go get debt installment financing for that. So from an accounting standpoint, this current fiscal year, you won't see it. It's next year, whenever that debt service comes on is when you'll see it, that you'll have to account for it.
Well, but when you order, if it's five hundred thousand, somebody's going to want a hundred and twenty-five thousand down and two draws and a final.
If, if you pay.
No. I've never seen one purchase like that.
Okay, well.
You hand, you hand them a check when the truck passes acceptance test in New Bern, North Carolina. The only, the only option is some of the manufacturers, if it's changed, let me know, because I've been out three years now, some of the manufacturers, upon the acceptance of the bid, will say, if you give me X amount of dollars down, I think it's usually fifteen percent or something like that, we can reduce the value of the truck by so many thousand dollars, and then you just pay the balance when the truck's accepted in New Bern.
Either way, but the, the, the issue is if the board were to say pay-go or debt installment financing, if it's debt installment financing, then it's all washed for this year. Basically, next year's when the debt service comes on. If you say, we want you to pay cash for this capital item, yes, it will affect the general fund. But we would probably still do the intent to reimburse through debt proceeds regardless, because then it allows us the option of whether or not we want to debt install financing, debt installment finance it, or we want to pay ca, we could still pay cash for it and not take out the debt.
Yeah, of all of the fire trucks that, that we've purchased, I can only recall one time that we get, that we paid a, a deposit when we placed the order to reduce the price of it. They've all been paid in full when the truck arrives. So you're talking, you're, you're right, you're talking next year. And I don't recommend bringing it all out of the, a hundred percent out of the general fund anyway. I mean, I think it's something that we should finance, and I think it's something that we should probably look at financing.
I wasn't talking about bringing it all out, I was talking about the initial down payment in.
Well, sometimes it's not worth it. Sometimes the down payment's not worth it because of the, it just all depends on the amount of discount they're going to give you on the truck.
Well, understanding the need that we've got, not just today, but tomorrow, I like what Alderman Odom was suggesting, let's give me the opportunity to go back and look at what we can get from the manufacturers as far as a bundle package, single package, whatever, and look at long-term planning, up the next three to five years, we know we've got to have X, Y, and Z. They, you know, provide two to three apparatus, we may be able to get enough of the savings.
The main thing I would say, I would be looking for a pumper, it might not be a pumper, but the way we're growing and the need with particularly the commercial growth of this city, obviously is, we've been a bar of time. I, I know, and this is a good thing that Alderman Astor's brought up, but I would be looking for a piece of equipment that has the most rapid response abilities, both speedwise and accessibility and adaptability and.
Right, and you run them in pairs. So if you scum something, if they, the engine out of the headquarters, which runs with the platform, you know, you, you don't need two platforms running, you need one platform or one quint and one pumper running. So what his need now is for this O-two model to be replaced, which is the first run out of the headquarters, is that correct?
Yes.
And it runs with the platform, correct?
That's correct.
So that's what needs to be replaced now. But I'm telling you, it's just a matter of, any day, you could have some major, major problems with a nineteen ninety-nine model platform. I mean, what's it cost to replace the bearing on that thing, and how many times have we had to replace it so far?
Right at fifteen grand.
Yeah, and it's been replaced how many times?
Twice.
Is the board in agreement to proceed with Alderman Odom's recommendation?
Absolutely.
Okay, does anybody have any problem with this, do that? And when would you be able to get us some information back?
Before budget.
I, I'll start on tomorrow.
Okay. Great.
So Bobby, let me say, they, you can place the years that you would like to take delivery of these trucks in a bundle, correct?
Yeah, we do that with the tower.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure that that option was still available.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on fire?
I'm happy with fire.
No, I, I just again, like I say, we're real proud of ISO two rating, and we obviously want to do those things, keep an ISO two rating.
And when are you going to do that presentation?
Coming up.
Good.
Okay. Page eighty-one, human resources. Human resources, no, not, no real big changes. They do have a little bit of expected overtime in addition to what they normally do, do the implementation, implementation of this new software. As you can see, the debt service went up a very minor amount, and that was for the munition addition for that department. But ultimately, the personnel relatively the same, operating expenses as well. So any questions on human resources?
Board have any questions?
Okay, moving on, we'll go to page one eleven, which is the police department. Actually, one thirteen is where the information starts. Police department is at one hundred and seventeen full-time positions. The personnel line on MBC went up, most of that is relative to the personnel increases that we saw for salaries, as well as some special, ELEO special allowance went up a little bit as well as far as that. And operating budget-wise, relatively flat, so to speak. Debt service kind of remains on par. We do plan on purchasing ten additional police vehicles this year so that we stay on this cycle of frontline police cars and replacement of those because of the mileage and the time on those vehicles. So we do have those incorporated into the budget this year, and that's found at seventy-five two-ten account. And that also, that, that number includes the equipment, lights, sirens, everything else associated with those vehicles.
Mark, I just, on the, the new vehicle for the animal control, I remember when we had this discussion, that was one of the arguments that someone had made for us to move forward with the second officer, is that we already had the equipment, but the very next year, now we're behind a.
I agree, that was going to be my question. Chief, I mean, he's working part-time from the, from our regular guy, so the truck should be, I don't know why we need another vehicle.
I'm sorry, I, I missed that highlight. That is one of the changes in this budget, actually, is that position, I think, was, wasn't included in there, JR is full-time?
We're not talking about, no, it's half, it's one point five. And that's what we talked about, it's the fifty-seven thousand dollars for a vehicle.
It's, it's a two thousand and six vehicle that we're replacing, it's got a high mileage on it, and there are times that we overlap the animal control officers, so we do need two vehicles operational.
Of course, we got rid of the other one, right?
And the, and the maintenance on it is, is, is high too.
I mean, can we use an older police car to, to use that, to have an additional vehicle rather than going?
Special requirements on these vehicles now because of the humane.
Couldn't use a police car, no man.
You can't just use a police car.
So is that the reason, Chief, don't run away.
I'm sorry.
So is that the reason that when there's not an animal control person on duty, a policeman can't pick up a dog? Is that?
Normally what happens is they run in and get the animal control truck.
So they have to leave the side of where they're at to go and get the animal control?
Or they radio for somebody else to get it for them.
Sure, we haven't gotten efficiencies there yet, have we? Are we still having ongoing discussions with the sheriff now that he's taken over animal control on the county side to see if there's some ways we can work together?
I haven't had any recently, but we have discussed it in the past.
Okay, really, we'd like to be able to share some resources there if we can. I'm with you on this, Alderman Odom.
I would say that I think we've done a good job over the past few years on replacing the vehicle fleet, and if we've got to replace the animal control vehicle, then maybe that takes the place of a couple of cruisers.
How many miles does it have on it? It is a van and it's got sixty thousand on it. Sixty thousand? Mm-hmm.
We can't get somebody to make us an animal police, um, control vehicle, like be creative? Pickup truck with a gate in the back or?
The best and the most humane way to transport those animals would be in those box car animal vehicles, like Vince has, we have one of those and then we have a van, basically. And you want to make sure your animals are cool and know who works.
How many, do we know how many animals we transport on a weekly basis, or do we have statistics?
I would say a lot. I don't have an exact number, but I can get you that.
Wow.
It's a lot, though. Yeah, it is a lot. But, I mean.
Sounds like we need to figure out a problem with the animals.
I would love to say, let's eliminate it, and if this one tears up beyond repair until next year, we'll, we'll look at another one, you know? It's a part-time vehicle.
I like Jeff's idea.
And you got to remember, though, if, if the one goes down, you need the other.
Right.
It's not a part-time vehicle because the part-time guy uses it. Well, I know, I mean, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, we just got through talking about them with fire trucks, nineteen ninety-nine model fire trucks, nineteen ninety-three model fire trucks.
My suggestion would be, we've got four sixty-five allocated for cruisers, that's the, that's the dollar amount the chief has to work with. If he feels like a sixty thousand mile van needs to be replaced and he wants to sacrifice a cruiser for it, that's your decision.
I second that.
That would be my stance.
I agree, I agree too.
Does everybody agree with that? Does everybody agree with that?
Do you make a motion?
No.
Mr. Stevens, you got that?
So essentially, what I'm hearing is, is that fifty-seven-one-ninety-one, which is the amount that was included for the animal control officer vehicle, will be removed individually in that the purchase of all either cruisers or the van, whatever the chief chooses, will have to stay within the four hundred and sixty-five dollars and six hundred, four hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
Four twenty-one, three twenty.
Yeah, where are you getting the...
Four sixty-five, six forty.
Where are you getting that number from?
It is on page one twenty-three, which is the ten vehicles at four sixty-five, six forty.
Then what's on page one thirteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that number, four sixty-five, includes the fifty...
Where are you at? I'm sorry, what number are y'all looking at?
Well, if you look at page one thirteen...
That's, if I'm right, that the police vehicles in the fleet camera system are combined into the number the city manager was looking at.
One's got an outfit on it, probably, and one doesn't.
So it's the four twenty-one, three twenty, with just the police cars?
Four twenty-one, three twenty is the police vehicles, forty-four, three twenty is the camera system that is budgeted in the same line as the police vehicles. The animal control fifty-seven-one-ninety-one is also included in the same budget line as the police vehicles.
Let me just restate my question here, or my answer, my understanding, I guess. So essentially, seventy-five-two-ten will be reduced by fifty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars.
Correct.
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on police department budget? Okay, we'll move to page one twenty-six, which is the emergency nine-one-one. Obviously, that has two personnel, one police service technician and one GIS technician. They operate within funds that are allowed for them, but operating-wise, their budget is nil, pretty much, other than some minor office supplies and materials.
Have we made any money from parking?
We have, I have got the parking, but I'll...
I thought that was the next one.
I'm on emergency nine-one-one right now.
Chief, are you fully staffed in your, this is that, that department? I know we, didn't we fund a couple of extra positions for you last year?
In which, I'm sorry, what is it?
It's not, it's not the emergency nine-one-one, it's telecommunications.
Telecommunication, okay, so that's different from the nine-one-one, or it's all the same, right?
Yeah, it's different.
We are fully staffed, yes.
Okay.
That's actually included in the police department's budget. We don't get paid for the personnel, we get paid for their equipment that they use, and they do pay for the two staff members that you see through the emergency nine-one-one support, which is a police service technician and a GIS technician that work specifically with that service. The next item, Alderman Harris mentioned the parking, that's on page one thirty of your budget. Once again, three part-time parking enforcement employees. This year's budget's thirty-four thousand three hundred, that was reduced from last year's, obviously, because mainly of the capital outlay. As far as the revenues generated, I'm not positive on that, Chief, do you have any idea on the, the revenues for parking?
Revenues for parking, I think last we checked, checked, it wasn't around thirteen thousand.
Yeah, the revenues would go back into the MSD, because the MSD pays this, correct? MSD pays, pays for the employees.
The revenue, the revenue goes into the general fund, the general, the amount of contribution from the MSD to the general fund to pay for these employees is reduced by the amount of revenues received for the parking funds.
But it covers between the parking fees and what MSD, so there's no real funds coming from...
So this is a wash, okay, cool.
Correct. Okay, any questions? Okay, page three sixty-nine is the next item in the police budget. That is the emergency nine-one-one telephone system. E-nine-one-one. This is for the supplies and materials that we have for our PSAP and public safety answering point, for those that want to know what the acronym stands for. As you can see, this is a revenue and an expense on page three seventy-two, three seventy-three, so we receive state nine-one-one distributions, and obviously have some investment earnings through our, through our bank accounts and fund balance appropriation. It actually has its own, it's its own fund, so it actually has a fund balance just like any other. So three, as you'll see, these zero out three hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars. You can see what the expenses are primarily, you have miscellaneous obligations and services, which include the telephone service, the wireless reimbursables, employee travel and training that's associated with their job functions, the contractual obligations we have through communications, and any kind of supplies and materials, mainly furniture and IT gets reimbursed as well. No personnel. Questions? All right, and then we have some other minor funds here, three eighty-three, if you'll go to that page, three eighty-five, that's equitable sharing, US Department of Justice, we have, we have thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars allocated for that. That money is spent towards special investigations primarily for us to investigate drug crimes and things like that. Page three ninety-three is the next, which is also the equitable sharing of the US Department of Treasury. It's zeroed out this year, so no need to really focus much on that. And then we have our police special revenue fund on page four twenty-one. Special revenue fund is utilized to investigate and mitigate drug crimes also in New Bern, and that has a fund, I'm sorry, an expense and revenue of seven thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars, mainly for other supplies and materials. Any questions on any of the police department?
Are we required to break those down like that?
Okay, moving on to parks and recreation, parks and recreation can be found on page eighty-nine. And if you have questions, I'll try to answer those to the best of my ability. Foster shares his regrets, he had a conference that he needed to... About this week, but he gave me some bullet points that I'm happy to share with you. You have any questions? I'll go over those real quick.
Oh, are we just on...
Yeah, we should get started.
Eighty-nine, am I allowed to ask general questions? You want me to wait till you get to parks and grounds?
Okay. Parks and Recreation Admin, we'll start there. As you can see, a slight uptick in the total budget, eight hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars, that's primarily due to moving a position over. That position was... I'm sorry, yes.
Special Events and Programs Coordinator?
Yes. Sorry, I was on the wrong page. Actually, it was the Office Assistant Three transferred from Facilities, that was the additional employee.
Because I noticed that they put somebody in there.
That's moving, so basically, they're moving the Office Assistant and Special Programs and Events Coordinator from Facilities to Admin, that's essentially what they're trying to do. Other professional services, we included some money in there for a master plan update, and it's time for our re-accreditation for our CAPRA accreditation for the Parks and Recreation Department. We are showing an increase in the budget for special recreation activities to cover various events, such as the Footloose on the Noose, the Movies in the Park, New Year's Eve Block Party, Fourth of July Celebration, the Easter Egg Hunt, which I heard was a big success, the Twilight, or I'm sorry, the Easter Egg Hunt was a success always, but the Twilight Egg Hunt was a big success this year. I think they had two or three thousand eggs that disappeared in about two minutes, so it was actually a pretty fun time. The Halloween Carnival, lots of other activities, so you'll see an increase in that budget for this year as well. A slight increase in youth athletic leagues, so that we can, to replace some of our outdated youth sports equipment and certify the existing equipment to make sure that those are to stand.
Is this what was included in the meeting we had?
Yep.
So the question is, the income that we get from sponsorships to go against this fifty-five thousand, how do you, how do you show?
Just brought in as any other revenue, general fund revenue.
So, but how does it, does it show someplace as far as, you know, revenues coming in under that, under this budget item, so you could see the...
It's included in our revenues, and I think if you wanted to see the highlights, if you go back to the very beginning of your book...
Oh, it goes in there, it's not in each...
Everything that we go through the budget is primarily, unless it's a separate fund, we're looking at the expenditure sides. In order for us to look at the revenues, we would go specifically to page two and three, those are your general fund revenues, so you should be able to find somewhere in there. JR, help me if you can.
Five-eight-eight-four-nine, Ms. Lanes contributions and donations.
Yep, five-eight-eight-four-nine, Ms. Lanes.
It's a good idea, to know how much we're, we're bringing in from sponsorships.
As much as we can get.
Understood, I mean, if we're covering the whole thing, it's good, just like we talk about with, you know, the parking, that we've covered that with MSD and parking, I think it's just a good idea to know what we're taking in.
Sure. Yeah, anything that we get as revenues are held in the revenues on page two and three, and oftentimes, whenever we have offsetting, whether that's through fees and charges that we have, which you have scheduled that that was given to you with this budget, as well as any revenues, ad valorem, our typical sales tax, all those kind of things, plus special departmental revenues that we receive, all of those are held in the revenue sections on page two and three.
For the special recreation activities and stuff, Footloose on the Noose, is there any appropriation for a new stage, or is that part of FEMA?
Yes, that's some of the FEMA reimbursement stuff.
So are we going to front the bill until we get reimbursed, since we have?
That's correct.
Cool.
Are we, are we going to get a temporary stage, or are we going to go ahead and build one, because it starts in...
I think he has, so, so my understanding is, is Foster has gone out to bid for the replacement and rebuild of a stage, if he needs in the interim before that stage is built to have a stage, we'll, we'll obviously just rent one from, from somewhere.
What, what kind of stage was possibly going to be built?
Yeah.
Was it one we talked about before?
A mitigated one.
Hopefully, it would be one that would be...
Are we not still talking about potentially a mobile one that we can use in other areas of the community, or they won't, they won't pay for a mobile one? Okay. Well, I just figured, we don't have to worry about that getting flooded.
That's not the kind of mitigation that they would pay for.
Is that, I was going to ask you, is that being mitigated?
My understanding is, is they're trying, so, let me get some detail from Foster.
Oh, that's all right.
But, but yes, I think that what we're, what our intent is...
Go back with Rick, right?
That would be the intent.
That would be mitigating.
Something that would be more of a, something that would be more of a static structure that would be a little bit more resilient to the water levels that come into the park.
Yeah, because I'm going to get through this, are we going to bring that back on the item, because we, we had discussions on plans on what was going to go down there, because we were talking about moving it, possibly different places, I didn't know we decided it was going to be built back in the same location, because I thought we wanted bigger and better.
We want to do that, and we can do that, it's obviously just...
Yeah, I thought we was talking about a nice one, with the cover, and, you know, I thought we would, oh, okay.
You just need to have another meeting, we call, and when Foster gets back, we'll have a meeting.
So when Foster gets back, let's get some details on that, obviously, he's gone to bid, we're, it's the intent that we would build, hopefully build something, like I said, that would be a little bit more resilient without me having to, like, go into a whole lot of detail. That would be, but, but it's our intent to make it better.
Okay. But I do agree with Alderman Bingo, I think we should have a mobile, because all of the events that we do, and then possibly rent them out to everybody else, we have it on hand, just throwing that out there.
Okay, any questions on Admin? We'll move to Parks and Grounds then, it's Organization sixty-thirty on page ninety-five of your book. Staffing level stayed the same at thirteen, the budget came down a little bit, primarily because capital outlay came down. Capital items for this, we have two quad cab trucks with the dump bed, Foster's got some extremely old vehicles that are in the budget here, or in, in operation that are set to be replaced, a thirty-five thousand dollar crew cab, as well as a forty-eight thousand dollar skid steer with power rake attachment for maintenance of, of some of the fields and other locations as well, cemeteries that they maintain a lot of property. Just kind of some highlights that are included in your budget that's kind of in the numbers, Foster gave me some bullet points here of cemetery preservation, projects to be completed by the end of this fiscal year, Cedar Grove Gates Phase One, Cedar Grove Fountain, the Greenwood Fence Phase One as well, so those are some of the things that are ongoing next fiscal year, their intent is to have each cemetery, a variety of preservation projects scheduled, such as wayfinding signage, some general repairs and upkeep, so they're going to try to incorporate some of that into their budget, especially with Cedar Grove and Cedar Grove Extension and Greenwood being those are historic type cemeteries, want to try to make sure and include those. Obviously, I've already highlighted the capital as far as the vehicle and equipment replacements, and they're going to continue the emphasis on improved park and greenscape maintenance, landscaping, curb maintenance, general park upgrades. As you will probably see, as you've gone by some of the parks, just the sheer maintenance reductions that we're seeing because they're actually spraying for weeds and everything else, it reduces the cycles in which we have to mow, which is ultimately saving staff time, so that they can actually spend that time upgrading and maintaining the facilities that we currently have, so that's always a very important thing.
Can you show me where the line item is budgeted for Kidsville and Martin Marietta?
So I think Kidsville and Martin Marietta are project funds.
Martin Marietta is a project fund, so it would not show up here. Kidsville is in a current year, in the current year, yes.
Oh, so we were covered.
So what would happen is, is probably at the end of this fiscal year, we will roll that, as we continue to raise funds for that, so that hundred and fifty thousand that you allocated in this year's budget for that will roll into next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, you said earlier that there was some funding in there for an update to the master plan, and then I see that there's some operating expense as far as improving the quality and safety. This probably goes without saying, but I would assume that we're going to get some details from that master plan in case there's changes, like there should be parks that are closed or relocated, that we wouldn't be spending money there, and then turn around and have a plan that says we shouldn't do that, correct?
Sure, I think as far as that master plan goes, it would be the intent to try to get an idea of existing facilities, potentially look at utilization rates, and then if there are parks that we phase out and turn back over, or whether we, you know, continue those parks, we have about twenty-eight, I think it is, different parks throughout the city, which is pocket parks, big parks, recreation centers, ballfields, everything, so it's, you know, it's a pretty significant number when, in the grand scheme of things, so that would definitely be something that would be looked at with master plan update. And, and one of the things, I will say, that when Foster arrived, one of the, one of the things that he saw was a very significant need for updating or upgrading some of the playground equipment, that, you know, some of them unsafe, obviously, you see what happened with, with Kidsville and its degradation over time, but that's some of the things that we, we see throughout a lot of the parks throughout the city. And it may be that some of those recreational facilities in, in areas where you maybe have older populations now that used to have a lot of kids back in the seventies or eighties when they were built, it may not need, you know, some of the equipment that they need now, it may be more better served as a green space with a covered shed and maybe a picnic shelter or something, so there's lots of different things that we can look at in that master plan.
On page ninety, maybe JR, you could tell me, we had money allocated for a dog park, five ninety-nine, and now zero, do we not own a dog park anymore?
No, that, so there were some, we do have a dog park, that was the expense associated with, I guess, upgrades to the dog park, there are some years where we have some expense in it, whether that's sod, whether that's re-roofing the little covered shelter that we have for the dog park, but all of that stuff, we do still have a dog park, right?
Okay, because me and Foster are trying to work on another one, because I've been getting a lot of complaints from citizens that supposedly this dog park, you have to pay to use it, so who... So who, who does that? Is that the city that charges or?
Yes.
So we charge people to use the dog park?
Uh, it's a membership fee and it's my understanding that the members who are members of that dog park prefer to stay that way because we had thought about eliminating.
Okay, well, there's a lot of citizens that have contacted me that want a dog park where they don't have to pay, so.
And that is, whether that's entirely the board's choice, if they want us to build another dog park or, or incorporate one of our existing parks and make it a new dog park?
Yeah.
We can do that and make it a free one. I will tell you that I don't know that we have any, I guess the difference between a dog park and a non-dog park or any other park is the fact that in any other dog park, they're required to stay on a leash. In a dog park, that's designated as a dog park and let them run around.
Right.
Fencing might be a little bit different.
How many members do you have for that thing? Do you have any idea?
Off the top of my head, no.
I mean.
Matt, do you remember roughly? When you were doing, cause I know we talked about.
I'd love to know if it's ten or if it's a hundred.
Yeah.
How much is the dog park fee?
Excuse me?
How much is the fee?
It's pretty small, very small enough. JR probably has it there in his schedule fee.
Yeah, um, yearly for one dog, twenty-five dollars for resident, fifty for non-resident, each additional dog twenty and thirty-five. One day pass, five dollars and fifteen dollars, weekend pass, fifteen dollars and twenty-five dollars.
One day pack, yeah, this is crazy.
Monthly pass, twenty dollars and twenty-five dollars.
So where is this dog park? Do I get a ticket at a kiosk or something like, how, I mean?
So it's at Glen Burnie Park and there is a keypad. And those who are members have a keypad entry and they can go in there and if they pay to be a member, then they can let their dog run around.
They got a German Shepherd sitting at the gate guard.
That is crazy to me.
You had no idea how many members there JR, right?
No, sir, I don't.
That'd be interesting to find out.
Do you have any, do you have?
How much income?
Do you have any on the revenues?
I don't believe we have a separate revenue to break that out.
Okay. Alright. We'll try to find them, come back to them.
Appreciate you.
Alright, moving on. Let's see, we are at facilities now, which begins on page one oh one. Not a lot of change in facilities, obviously, other than two full-time positions were moved over to, back, back to admin. Going to try to continue our, our upgrading internally of some of the facilities as much as we can. Obviously, they are older facilities. Stanley Lot Recreation Center, you all know that, not to revisit it, but it's, it's definitely going through the process now as far as mitigation. And hopefully we'll hear back something sooner rather than later from FEMA with regards to that. But ultimately, all in all, the budget did go down for this year. Reduction also in our operating budget slightly. And some of that's attributed to the fact that Stanley Lot will be down for the year most likely.
Are we, can we take a five-minute bathroom break?
Um, if you wanna.
Let me get your public works.
Close out, let's see, where are we at here? Yeah, that, I think facilities closes out parks and recreation, so if you wanna, your.
Take five minutes.
I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute break. We'll do the bathroom.
Okay. Alright, so next item in our budget will be public works. Public works begins on page one thirty-five. So public works had some change, primarily it's all personnel services. A position, there's been some reorganization in that department, you'll see that. One of the positions that was in the street department actually has been reallocated to admin. So you'll see an offsetting reduction, I believe, in the street department going down to eighteen. But there has been some, some reorganization at master request and I reviewed it, thought it made sense. So you'll see that, but primarily operating wise and debt service, debt service went down, but operating wise is relatively flat with a small decrease. Pretty simple, any questions on public works and admin? Insurance, so the insurance fund is basically for the liability and property insurance of the city. It's stayed in flat for this year with no change.
I know it's probably not under that, but I certainly hope we are keeping up with bond, performance bonds and things like that throughout New Bern with developments and things.
Yeah.
And I hope there's some checks and balance to make sure that's being properly audited or whatever.
Yep. We actually have a tracking mechanism through our development services department as well as all the bonds that are supposed to go to our finance department. And finance department actually has those as well, so that they keep track of them.
All of the what, say that word to me?
Bonds, like for developments, they have to establish, like if they're building a development, they have to establish a bond, make sure that they get the work done. Because if they don't, we'll call the bond and do it ourselves.
Oh, okay.
The garage, garage went up slightly this year. They had, we actually moved one position from the street department to, which was a heavy equipment mechanic over to the garage. Ribbon cutting Monday. I'd like to see all of y'all out there, fabulous facility. I think everybody's gonna be pleased, I know I went by there today, the garage staff's very happy and most everybody that's, that's come by and visited is very pleased with it as well. So I think it's gonna, it'll work out real well out there. Field and facilities working well, the county's out there, city's out there, so everybody's feeling at that location other than our alternative location, which is at Cal Road, at, at our water plant. We have operating expenses, obviously our vehicle liability insurance is handled in the garage area and that gets allocated out based on the department usage of vehicles. Parts inventory, repair and maintenance of by contracted services, all of that's typical repair and maintenance of our vehicles.
Mark, what's the, the plan for the old garage building?
So, right now it's not final. I have had some discussions with Craven Community College with regards to their potential interest in utilizing it for another workforce development program. They are very interested in it and are looking to do a automotive and slash diesel mechanic program potentially there. So they would actually find some funds to retrofit and rehab that building. And you like, the fielding facility will be abandoned, it's pretty much, we've, we've taken it all out at that point, all of our field that remains in that field tank. Matt? Yeah, so that, so we're, our field's essentially gone from there now, we're fielding at, at the new location entirely. And so the bays and all that stuff would be upfit, retrofitted, just like we did with the Bolt Center. And then they could potentially offer some programming there. That's kind of what's being worked on in the scenes. Obviously, the board's input would be, be had on that as well as your final decision with regards to another lease program with the community college. But it's an opportunity for us, I think, to provide even further workforce development in that area.
I believe they have several programs they'd like to put over there, they can get funds for it because it's just, they're really excited for the Bolt Center to open and they have other programs they'd like to move over there. So I think that's a win-win and that spot is perfect for their automotive because they don't have any space at the college right now and there's a lot of jobs for mechanics that are sitting empty right now because they can't train enough.
The reason I ask is cause the, the aesthetics of that building is pretty poor and I know that whole improvement of that area is, is coming and traffic's gonna be better with the fact that we're not moving in and out and getting gas. And if they have the funding to do it and that's the path we get on, that'd be great. If not, I think we probably should look at doing something to help with the aesthetics of it.
Yeah, I agree.
Are you going to abandon those tanks? Are they gonna be abandoned or you just gonna wait and see if you?
Hey, a little just aside because Jordan's here. I did have a complaint from some of the neighbors on Park Avenue about the light, the new lighting to light up that area being really bright and shiny into their home. I don't know if that's something that they can put shields or something on, if you could look at that. I believe I sent you that email this morning, copied you on that.
Did, and, and I think that Ms. Rugey responded to it.
Yeah, he did, I, but the other.
There's gonna be screenings and things like that.
Yeah, and, and they're fine, the other issue was the, was the lighting and I knew Charlie was gone, but since Jordan's here, maybe he could look into it for me. Thanks, Jordan.
Okay. Alright, no other questions about the garage?
I think that garage, the, the lift that you're thinking about buying? Boom, hundred-foot boom? Is that under garage?
No. That would be under public buildings. Yeah, the public buildings.
I got you. Okay.
And that's where I am now, so we'll talk about public buildings.
Well, I didn't say anything about your Skidster, cause that's a very universal piece of equipment. This boom is a great addition to the city, except for the fact a hundred-foot boom doesn't do what a thirty and a thirty doesn't do what a hundred does. So I would just caution the city and I'm sure you guys have looked at it. I, I can't imagine in some instances, this thing would be way too big for some applications. And so if you're seeing, and I know you'll probably use it throughout the enterprises of the city, but I would just caution to make sure that you get the right fit. But I, I wonder, I question, sometimes, remember if you bought a thirty-seven foot or forty-five foot, always buy a two, a two-person boom, five-hundred-pound metal one, but when you need a big job, just go rent it. Or if you buy the big one, it's gonna be way too big sometimes, you're gonna have to rent the small one. So you've thought that out pretty thoroughly, that the hundred is what you need?
So, yes, and, and Matt can come up and elaborate if he wants or if the board's.
Cause it, yes, quite an expenditure.
So we've, we've got a scissor, we've already got a scissor lift. The scissor lift can handle all of those little small, you know, twenty-foot, thirty-foot type heights that we have.
As long as it's four-wheel drive? If it's two-wheel, no.
The, yeah, well, the scissor lift is definitely not a four-wheel drive. It's, it's actually.
Then it's not gonna do everything, cause you're limited by mobility. Anyway.
Most of the time that our usage of the, the scissor lift is, you know, maybe changing lots out inside the gymnasiums or changing, you know, whatever we've gotta do, certain things like that. The hundred-foot boom that we're looking to purchase is specifically for ballfield lights. Every time we have ballfield lights, we have to rent one, we have to switch ballfield light. Every time we work on city hall, we have to rent one. Every time we do something with the, now that we're doing the New Year's Eve celebration thing, we have to get a lift for that. What, what's the tree? Every time that we do the, the tree, we can do it with a bucket, but it's also, it'd be beneficial to have it if we had the, the hundred-foot boom as well.
We actually have it twice for Christmas.
Twice for Christmas, what's been your expense this past year alone on the, the lift though?
I have to believe because I don't have to hear about it. We did look at the number for Gerald, but we're spending it for a rental and a parking wreck.
Well, I'm not laboring, I'm just mentioning that, sound me like some of what you just said. The electric enterprise could possibly have a cherry pick or something, but I'm not getting into all that. Just caution to make sure, which mine?
What's interesting is, is our electric apartment does not have a one-hundred-foot bucket truck. That's one of the things that they have considered purchasing, but we haven't really had the need for. Every time we use, uh, need a, a high, high lift bucket truck, we don't have one. So.
Of course, that, this won't be applicable to that, I'm sure, because of the insulating requirements for, to use an electric.
Absolutely not.
So the question is, do you, before you do that, do you get one that meets all the hydraulic fluid requirements and insulated purposes as to where the electric apartment could use it? Do you spend another fifteen thousand to do that?
We just, we, we could definitely look at that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure you buy the right one.
Sure. We can definitely look at that, we'll talk with Charlie, see what his needs are for a hundred-foot boom. Obviously, some of our higher lines that we have that are some of our transmission lines that are coming in from Duke are higher lines that require a, a higher lift. So we can definitely look at that.
That's all I have.
One other question. On the front of the building that FEMA is using right now, what are the plans for that?
Uh, you're talking about for the water plant?
Yes.
Uh, the garage?
Yes, the front.
I think our intent was, we, we were investigating with Chief Summers, potentially looking to put a substation there for police. We were gonna investigate that and, and it may mean that if we can get there, it may be that we can get out of the mall. So there's some things that we're looking at right now. But ultimately, right now FEMA's in there and they're, they've been in there for, what, four or five months now, I guess? End of June.
So when were you looking, planning on picking that up again?
We, I think it would probably be appropriate for us to let FEMA get out of there and then investigate the space that's there and the needs. And then ultimately, Chief, when does your contract run out at the mall substation?
It's basically month to month.
Month to month? So we're month to month, I mean, and it may be that we got, we get ousted out of there, you know? So we've, we've gotta look at that doubtful, but, you know, it could potentially happen. And we always run into what, I think they tried to raise the rent on us before, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, been pretty steady lately. But something considered.
Okay, thank you.
Public buildings, obviously, there's a relatively minor change in the personnel services, mostly due to the employee raises. Operating budget stayed flat, the capital outlay, the only, the only item you have there is basically that one hundred-foot boom lift. They maintain a lot of, of buildings and properties and have a lot of work right now going on with repairs and maintenance from the storm stuff and working with contractors to get that done. Any other questions on public buildings? Okay, we'll move on to streets. Streets, budget personnel service, you'll see a decline in that. That was primarily because of the reduction in the staff's transferring to different divisions. You'll see, I think it was a net three positions that were, you had a staff engineer, or two positions. Staff engineer went to the admin department, the heavy equipment mechanic went to the garage. So it goes from twenty to eighteen. Operating budget this year, so over the past several years, I think since two thousand and fifteen, is that correct, Matt? We've had about seven million dollars worth of resurfacing projects throughout the city, which is a pretty good chunk. And a lot of that due to some good fund balance position that we were in. So this year we backed that down to five hundred thousand dollars for resurfacing and street improvements so that we could incorporate the raises in the budget. And our street lighting continues to go up as we continue to add street lighting. However, we're trying to offset that as much as we can through the implementation of LED lights throughout the city. So as they go and they have to replace a metal halide or, you know, some, some of our other kind of, of lightings, typically our street lightings are replaced with LED. So as you'll see, those, those kind of get incorporated as, as we go process. Sidewalk and curving projects, we put in eighty-five thousand dollars for that so that we can add some sidewalks and curvings each year and try to make our city more walkable and more accessible. And we're replacing one flatbed pickup truck at forty-eight thousand dollars as a capital item. That's the street budget, unless you have any questions.
Mark, the resurfacing in the old airport road, why wouldn't we go ahead and budget that? Do we?
It's not a resurface, it's gonna be more of a major project. So it wouldn't be built into this particular budget, it's a project fund, old airport road.
Yes, sir, that's, the old airport is actually already budgeted, we have, that's in the two thousand and seventeen roadway improvements fund.
All of it is already?
We budgeted for an estimated amount. We did that at the time we received the funds from the state, the six hundred and some thousand dollars. And once we have better information from the engineers on the estimated cost, we will re-appropriate, or we will add additional appropriations for that.
Thank you.
Ultimately, though, it would be the debt service that would come on at some point or another as it transfers out of the project fund into, into the street's budget. But it may be, you know, a year before that happens, it'd probably be next year's budget, once it's completed. Okay. So we go to stormwater maintenance, one sixty-three. As directed by the board, the stormwater utility was eliminated and the stormwater maintenance division was put into the public works budget. Our, our tax rate prior to was point four six per hundred evaluation. Our revenue neutral was, will be point four eight two two to make us revenue neutral for our new tax rate here in the city. As you'll see, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one ninety-five, a hundred thousand dollars of that as repair and maintenance and stormwater improvements. We have one service vehicle that we're gonna replace at thirty-five thousand. And all of the salaries, all the, basically everything that was projected that would have been the utility transfers over to now the stormwater. over to, uh, now the stormwater department.
Um, any money that's left over in the stormwater fund, how do you have to handle that? Because it was a fee at the end of June thirty, what do you do with it?
Gerald?
Anything, anything that is, uh, within the stormwater fund will be transferred over to the general fund, uh, and, uh, we are, we may only spend those funds on, uh, on stormwater related activities, and given the fact that we have, uh, so much money budgeted in stormwater with no fee, that will eat up any, any restrictions we have, uh, next fiscal year, if, if there happen to be any.
Okay, does there have to be, I'm, I'm just curious, a report to the public, or any public statement made that there was?
It, it would definitely come out in an audit.
It was an enterprise fund, so.
It, it would definitely show up in the audit whenever we perform that. Okay, any other questions on the stormwater utility, or stormwater maintenance? Sorry, it's gonna take me a while to get used to that one. Stormwater maintenance, uh, division?
Well, it's not about the budget, but it might be a good time just to update on where we are on all our meetings with USDA, any FEMA silk erosion?
We're happy to do that now, if you want to. We actually plan on doing that in two weeks. Matt's gonna do a full presentation with PowerPoint and everything else, if, if that'll work at that point.
Thank you.
All right, um, so that takes us to the solid waste fund. Uh, solid waste fund is ta- uh, found on page three forty three of your budget book. Solid waste fund has a revenue and an expenditure, so the revenues are on three forty four, the expenditures are on three forty five. Um, what you'll see on the revenue side is the revenues that we receive, both commercial and residential. Um, so, uh, we're estimating a million dollars on commercial, two point two five million on residential. Um, some other accumulated fees, mulching services, uh, any of the leaf and limb that we take, we take over to, um, have chipped up and burn off at the steam plant. Um, so that, that works out, it's a good relationship that we've had for a long, long time. Um, the expenditure summary, uh, as you can see, uh, there's, uh, some associated debt that we have. Most of that's due to knuckle booms and, and some other purchases that we've had, um, and in the past. Uh, solid waste, uh, that's our expense primarily is contractual obligations that we have as far as our expense. Page three forty nine starts to detail all of those, if you wanna look at that, uh, page. We have one replacement trout, route truck that we're doing, it's a hundred eighty thousand dollars for a knuckle boom, those, the trucks that collect round goods and lot goods throughout the city. Um, the existing revi- uh, residential refuse contract, uh, was sold from G S Waste Industries, who now provides both our residential and commercial refuse contract. Those expire on the thirtieth of June, twenty twenty two. Uh, this year, we had in our budget, we incorporated a CPI increase for two thousand nineteen at one point two percent. That's built into the contract, uh, year to year, that changes, but, uh, when we made our last fee adjustment, uh, we actually incorporated what we felt and projected out to be a CPIs over the five year period of the contract. So, uh, right now, as far as revenues, uh, versus our expenditures, we're still in good shape.
Mark, why, why do we transfer money from the general fund to the solid waste fund?
That's my question. Do you wanna comment on that, Gerald?
That is to cover the, uh, ha- the difference between the, uh, for the senior discount, senior credit. By law, we cannot provide that within the enterprise fund, so the general fund has to provide that.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a good time to ask what we may or may not do in light of the county's recycling programs?
That's what I was gonna do.
That's gonna impact our budget, I assume.
It, uh, it doesn't impact our budget, um, the, as, as long as you, as long as you don't choose to do something else. If you choose to opt out of their program and do something else, then it will impact our budget. If you choose to, uh, stay with what the county is proposing, uh, with, uh, the, their adoption on Friday of the contract, or their, their acceptance of the contract, they're looking to do a ninety six gallon roll off container, once per month pickup, uh, versus the seventeen gallon bins. Um, and so, uh, obviously, they'll be collecting the bins and rolling out the ninety six gallon containers prior to.
The trash cans, the, the trash can?
Yeah, but they're only gonna collect them once a month, so you gotta remember.
Break your boxes down, bend your plastics and put them in there.
So, uh, so they'll, they'll be collecting those, uh, on a monthly, uh, basis. Uh, if the board chooses that they wish for us to do something different, or continue to go through the bid process, uh, and, and go out to bid on it, we definitely could do that, uh, but, um, uh, we don't know what that's gonna be. Uh, we stand prepared, uh, I know we had discussed and, and, uh, the board was considering whether or not to send us, or to have, have us send out an RFP for, uh, the cost of those services, once we found out that, uh, that was happening. Um, so we stand ready to, to, to do whatever the board wishes are. Now that they've reinstated it, your minds may have changed.
Well, I've heard from several of the, um, constituents that they really would rather pay more money and continue with the weekly pickup than having a stinking recyclable container sitting around their house for a month. So, and I think if, you know, if we have, uh, if we break LA from the county and do our own recyclable, then it's a good possibility we'd even get it cheaper. Now, according to the, the lady that was here at the last meeting. The question is, is if we break away from the county, will the county still charge us the fee, you know, on our tax bill? And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that they would say no, because in light that Bridgestone is not, is not being charged.
That's my understanding, and, and I would argue the point that, um, Bridgestone has had recycling individually for some time now. Uh, they have not been charged that recycling fee, and, and so therefore, they, to me, they've set that precedent, and if they, I, I would think they would need to reproduct back if they're gonna say that we need to pay it.
Well, I'm thinking that they...
On Bridgestone, but that, you know.
Partially brokered their deal for the simple fact that there was a outcry from a lot of city, citizen, from city citizens, that if we decided to back out, you know what I'm saying, that their contract could possibly have been based off the fact that a lot of this, within the city limits, they're gonna, you know, do those roads, I mean.
They were put on notice, though. They were giving heads up.
But they, they came back and they, once, I don't see what's wrong with once a month, I mean, it's, it's once a month. And we were at a point where it was nothing.
Matt and I were actually at the county meeting, and just, just so you fill you in a little bit, so their, I think this is poor negotiating on Waste Industries, but their contract with the county is irregardless of what the cities do. So if every city pulled out, and all they had to do was go around and just do the rural areas, they still have to honor that price, correct, Matt?
Wow.
My, my concern would be, our trash contract is up a year, a year and a half from now?
Two years from July.
Two years from July one, so.
We, we'll go to bid in, uh, about a year and a half.
Okay, a year and a half is when we would bid. My concern is, is if we, if we don't have some sort of unified front that both the county and the city could end up on the short end of the stick with this, because we all know that there's only one bidder out there right now. Um, I think, personally, I think that we should give it a try and see how it works, uh, with the once a month. I've had fairly positive feedback, um, from the folks I've heard from. Uh, I don't, I haven't heard of the smell issue, I guess with milk or something in summertime, that could be an issue. Um, but I think from a city standpoint, what I would, what I would personally like to see is staff look at, again, this is a little out of my norm, but let us take a look at doing this internally. Um, cause when you pick up a recycling bin, you know, it's not a specialized truck that you have to have an arm to do that. Um, you know, it's, it's a fairly simple job. You have one person drive a truck, one person's on the back of it, and they get out and they dump it. Uh, I would like to see what the cost would be for us to do this, um, because I think if, if we continue to be beholden to Waste Industries, then they've got us where they want us. Uh, we've gotta have some sort of secondary option, and I think that would be taking this internally. Uh, I know that there was a lot of talk about, you know, this is gonna, you know, somebody's gonna be an entrepreneur and start a new pickup company when all this mess was going on, but it's, it's not as easy as you may think to start something like that. So I, I would, I would like to, my vote, if we're voting, you know, talking about it, would be to, let's see how it works with the county, with this new plan, cause it's not gonna happen in July one. It's gonna have to be a phase in effect, cause they have to go get the new trucks to actually pick the bins up. Uh, so let's see how that works, but in the meantime, let staff be looking at, if we were to do this internally, what would the cost be, and maybe in preparation for next year.
Let's also at the same time see what it would, what the cost would be if we contracted, so we'll have both sides.
I think, if, if, if you wanted, I guess my, my opinion doesn't really matter, but I wanna provide you a professional recommendation here. I, I think that, um, what, what I would say is that, um, uh, if you do decide to see how it goes, and I think that's probably an, an advisable thing, they're gonna have to pick up all that stuff anyways and see how it goes, then what you could do is, in the meantime, Matt and I can be evaluating what the cost would be for us to do it internally, and then you're a year and a half removed from putting this out to bid. I think economy of scale makes a difference when it comes to these contracts, and if you were to bid out the trash services along with the city's recycling services, and then decided to opt out at that point, which you could do at any point, I would imagine, then at that point, you have a larger economy of scale to where you may get more bidders, and it may not only be Waste Industries who wishes, because I think there's advantage to our density. And if we were to bid this with the trash and the recycling, a bunch of different options, that opens up the ability for a lot of other companies to bid it, then at that point, we may have more interest.
And we, we could also contract with Trent Woods and River Bend too, to do their recycling pickup too, right?
That's correct.
Sure, just to make a point, we did get two or three bids last time, Waste Industries was not the one bidder. They were the only bidder on the county one this time, but they were not when we bid it three years ago.
Yep, and I, and I really do think that density makes a lot, because i- if you think about it, it's, it's, it's an opportunity to where if they were to get recycling and get the trash services, it'd behooves their interest at that point to bid on it, because now they're starting to get their foot in the door versus individually bidding out. And, and I've always thought that was a, a little bit of a, if you individually bid things out, that's a little bit of a fault, because it, it, it means that you're trying to share the services, which may not be as enticing for a private company to come in and do. They would love to come in and get the entire, entire contract, I'm sure.
What about, um, if we did it ourselves, then would we get the revenue from selling the recyclables?
Um, I'm not sure that the revenues would out overcome the expenditures.
Understood, but would that still be a source?
Sure, you would, yes. Um, there would be some, and, and I, like I said, I think it would be more of, uh, a negotiated contract price with Sunoco or whomever, and that's assuming that Sunoco would be willing to have a contract with us.
Right.
You know, that's the other thing that we've gotta look at, is, is we've gotta be able to take it somewhere. If Sunoco doesn't do it in Jacksonville, and they're not willing to work with the city, where's the next closest place that we can take these recyclables? And then at that point, you gotta think about hauling costs, and then you gotta think about sorting costs and, and, and facility costs, and, you know, stuff like that. So there's a lot of things capital wise that we would need to look at, you know? Not only is it just the track, the truck investment, you've gotta look at other options as well.
What happens with it after you pick it up.
Yep, and then we would have to set some pretty strong policy, that if it's co-mingled with stuff that isn't picked up, then we're not gonna pick it up, so that means that we gotta take the stance of, hey, well, we're gonna flag it like we do the leaf and limb, where stuff get put out that shouldn't be, and we're not gonna pick it up, so.
Well, that's why I think it would be a great idea for us to at least get a price from whoever. I mean, it's, it's not gonna hurt to get a price from the company that's doing it now, just to find out what it would cost us if we, you know, decided to break away from the county's plan and go to a weekly service.
And we could do that, but still, yet, I, I think if you did it, Waste Industries would probably be the only bidder. They would probably give you a price that they think that they could probably make a little bit, they, they could still make money on, but it might be a little bit less than the county's. But the problem is, is are we on, would we be willing to only do a year and a half contract? And if so, would anybody else be willing to bid on it? Probably not. So essentially, you're limiting yourself to, to Waste Industries being the only person. Because I, like I said, I think right now with the recyclable economy the way it is, the only thing you're getting money for is aluminum, and the rest of the stuff is, there's just not a lot of market out there right now. Um, and, uh, to just get recycling, you're getting twelve thousand pickups throughout the city, and you've got more expense in it than you do.
Well, that's the good, that's the big, go ahead.
Doesn't Waste Industry already pick up our trash?
They do.
So why couldn't we try and renegotiate that contract if we did do recycling on a weekly basis to see if we're already on contract?
And, and like I said, we're, we're, we can do that.
Yeah, I would, I would go that route. We already have a contract with them, see if they can give us a discount for recycling, and what that would be for that weekly pickup for the individual.
Assuming that the county still won't charge us. Cause if the county still charges us, then we're, this is a moot point.
And, and the good news is, is that they already have the relationship for the, with the buyer. I mean.
Yep, that's, that's correct.
We wouldn't have to worry about that if the...
So it sounds to me like what we, what, 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 what I'm hearing from the board is that you want us to approach Waste Industries about maintaining the seventeen gallon cans, or totes, uh, in the city, uh, for the next year and a half. Um, what would be your price for weekly pickup of that? And then at that point, we can, um, we can move towards, uh, rebidding all of it together in a year and a half.
Absolutely.
Let me, let me just extend on what Mark just said here, cause I've had some initial conversations with Waste Industries, and currently, the way it is with the county right now, they're gonna provide a once a month service, and it's four dollars and fifty cents per month. Uh, the, the original contract was six dollars per month on a weekly basis. If we broke the city out and went just with the city, now she'll, they'll give me some exact numbers, but you're probably looking five to five twenty five per week. So it's gonna cost more than the four dollars that the county's charging, but it's gonna be less than the six dollars that their original bid was. Uh, would there be a reduction in our trash service? I would venture to say probably not, just because it's different route days, different collection days, and different trucks. So it's probably not gonna save us any money in that way. So to answer, I think, your question, if you're asking, we get exact numbers, but you're probably in that five to five twenty five per week range.
And what will we pay them a week with the county?
Four dollars right now on their monthly subscription.
So for an extra dollar and a quarter a week, we can get the weekly pickups?
Correct. And, and like I said, I get that exact number, but, you know, just talking to the norm, uh, over the last couple of weeks, that's, that's about what you're looking at.
Well, from everyone I've spoken with, and the phone calls I've gotten, emails I've received, people were saying they would pay more to continue the weekly pickup.
The other thing I'll add, I'll add just kind of what Mark said, we have received probably as many phone calls as anybody have at our office. Uh, nobody was happy with going away with the recycling service, but I don't know that we've had any complaints about the one month service.
Matt, can you maybe get some information on that subscription service from them? Can they, I'm assuming they'll do the subscription service in addition to what they're doing now?
Uh, I would think they would. Um, anybody living in the county right now has a subscription service for their trash. I currently have one. Um, I pay Waste Industries directly to pick up my trash, so if, I guess if somebody wanted to do a subscription for additional services, I'm, I'm sure they...
So like, they, they talked about it at the county meeting, if a neighborhood wanted to do it, and they, individuals could do it too, but the, the cost is gonna be really high. But if a neighborhood, say Toberna for example, got together and said, hey, we wanna do a subscription service to have weekly pickup, that's something they could do, and they contract separately with Waste Industries, so.
Maybe just charge their HOA.
That would be a great information to post on, on the Facebook page, if you get those, um, kinda like dollar amounts and stuff, cause I know this was a hot topic, cause, I mean, or a number that someone can call.
I will reach out to Waste Industries this afternoon, uh, on the master, to kinda get that number, hey, if we were to break out separate. Might take them a couple of days, but certainly by the next board meeting, they'll have it. Um, and also to see what the options are in the subscription, subscription service as well.
And I reckon we need to confirm with the county, if we break away, are they gonna still charge us?
I'm, I'm agreeing with Mark, I don't know how they could, but.
Okay, well, I agree with Mark too.
We can verify, we can verify.
If you do it too soon, they'll just add it to the tax rate, and everybody's gonna pay for it, so. Which is what I would do probably, if I was in that position.
Is raise taxes to pay for garbage pickup? Mark, ready then?
Thanks, Mark.
Any other questions on solid waste?
Well, what all I heard, it must be like, it's more favorable weight for a year and a half from now, if we were even thinking about doing anything other than Waste Industries. The other thing I heard, is I heard Chairman Lanner say that half of this stuff is going to landfill, and I've heard the lady down there, the spokesman for the industry, say that everything was being recycled but the glass. So I remain, um, clouded as to what's going on with this industry. And, and, and all they're doing is haulers, they're not in the recycling. They're only hauling at the present time, and they're only gonna haul in the future, and if we engage anybody, all they're gonna be is a hauler, and that will be recycling this, is what I have heard, is that?
Well, yeah, I, that's what I understand too. I was just relieved to know that Waste Industries wasn't hauling it to the trash pile, cause I was told that, that's what they were carrying in.
Well, somebody evidently is doing that.
Well, I mean, what, is it Sunco, Sunco?
Sunco or Jacksonville.
Sunco in Jacksonville is what she was telling me, if there's no market, for example, glass, if there's no market for glass... glass, if there's no market for glass, they stockpile it until maybe a market's available, which can't stockpile so much, so glass ends up having to go somewhere else. But it's not, it's the buyer that's doing, Sunco is doing.
I guess there's two questions that need to be answered. One, when Waste Industries collects it, do they have a transfer facility that they take it to and dump it before it goes to Sunoco? And if they do, when they have that transfer station, does everything that they bring in there go to Sunoco or not? If it doesn't, that means it's probably going to the landfill, because their operation is in Carteret County. If it is going to Sunoco, then my next question would be, is this Torswama have a vendor such as Sunoco that comes and dumps stuff at our landfill that our three counties, Carteret, Pamlico, and Craven County, pay for? If not, then it's probably going to Onslow County's landfill, which, you know, at that point, that's their business, but that would be my concern. That would be the two concerns that I have.
Somebody's paying a tip for you, aren't they?
If, either way, yes, somebody's paying the tip for you.
I would think that Waste Industries would want to haul as much of it as they can to, because I'm sure they're being paid by the ton, that they haul into Sunco, whatever name that company is, and, you know, they might be carrying it somewhere else afterwards, but I'm sure Waste Industries hauling every ounce of it they can get up there.
Norm said the other day that they get all the recycles here locally, they take it to their facility, they combine it all, they don't sort or anything, they just combine it all, put it on a tractor-trailer. That tractor-trailer goes to Jacksonville, it goes to Jacksonville, goes through a mini-sort, if you will, and then, once they take some things out, the remainder of it goes to Raleigh, to a larger sorting facility, and then that's where it all gets packaged up and gets sent off wherever. Is that right, Matt?
That's correct. I've been just, I've done it to one, and it's pretty accurate what you're saying.
Good. I'm just glad to know that they're not carrying it in landfill.
It's a great idea.
But I would love to see the price of the weekly, to continue to service just like we're doing.
I was just going to say, I would love to be at a point where we're able to, like, be really creative, because I just Googled, because I know I've seen it somewhere, where you can take waste glass, and it's crushed up, and you can put it into the asphalt and put it into pavement.
She said that.
So, you know, like, all of these issues with the plastic and the paper, like, if we were able to create a way where we can recycle our own stuff and save money, I think it would be great, but it is possible that you can take glass and put it into asphalt and that, into the pavement and recycle glass.
There's actually a facility in Wilson that does that.
Really?
Yeah, and the way I'm familiar with is, they sell it as abrasive blast media. The issue is, they've got so much right now that it's super cheap to buy. I mean, you can buy a 50-pound bag of glass media for $5.00, $6.00. I don't sell it for that, but that's what we bought it for.
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, it takes a lot of glass to come up with a 50-pound bag of crushed glass.
Any other questions on saw waste? All right. I'll keep on rolling as long as we can get through this whole thing, if you want.
Great.
So we'll go, we'll go to the water fund. Begins on page 178. 178, the water fund, starts with your revenue and your expenditure summaries. To go into a little more detail, you've got to go to page 183, which starts at the Water Resources Administration. So as you can see here, pretty much static as far as personnel services and operating. Capital outlay went up a little bit, $56,000 for that. That was for a new truck that's going to be purchased, SUV, actually, to replace a 12-year-old 150,000-mile vehicle. Personnel stays the same, no real changes in water resources add. Any questions on that? Okay, next, we'll go to water treatment, 9202. As you can see, this division here had a slight, small increase in personnel services, mainly because of raises, slight decrease in operating budget. Majority of the difference you see between the 1819 and the 1920 budget is with the capital outlay, $206,750. That is for 350 KW generators at $171,750, and replacement of a pickup truck at $35,000. Operating budget, we account for 20 different production wells, chemicals, water treatment, lab testing to meet state requirements, service and maintenance of six elevated and three ground storage tanks, so those all add up to be some pretty significant numbers, but it's necessary for us to maintain our water supply in the cities. Moving on to water distribution system maintenance, excuse me. Personnel services, no additional employees, so that remains the same. Operating budget is pretty much static, and capital outlay remains fairly static, mainly because we invest in our water system improvements every year, $200,000 for this year that we're looking to do, $39,000 for a utility van replacement, and $25,000 for a forklift. Any questions? That pretty much covers the water fund, so you'll get the water debt service, you'll see that where we stand now. That's actually down a little bit from the 1718 budget year and the 1819 budget year. Our shared services is found on 219, that's the services that the water fund pays for, as we talked about the allocation, so you've got the governing board, IT, the warehouse, the human resources, the admin, accounting, all of those are broken down as to what they contribute as far as the water fund towards those particular items, as far as their shared services. And then, on page 220 and 221, you'll see the inter-fund transfers and supports. Basically, the only thing you have in this year's budget is the payment in lieu of taxes for the water fund, and then the contingency at $94,381 for any kind of changes that might be incurred throughout the year, and to balance the budget. Any questions on the water fund? All right, moving along to sewer funds. Once again, just like the water fund, you have the revenue and expenditure summaries, 224 and 225 of your budget. Primary source of revenue is from our basic customer service, which is our utility bills for water provided to our citizens and others that are outside of our seat limits, I'm sorry, sewer service that is outside. And also, on our expenditure, you can see all the different divisions, as well as the shared services, transfers, supports, and contingency, that's all included as part of the balancing of the budget. On page 228 starts the sewer treatment division. The sewer treatment division remains flat, relatively speaking. Personnel service is slightly up due to last year's and this year's salary increases. Operating expenses are flat, capital outlay went down this year pretty significantly. The capital for this year in this budget is $35,000 for a pickup replacement, $16,000 for a compact tractor replacement, and $13,000 for commercial mower, because some of the facilities that we have require a significant amount of land and mowing necessary, so they The next division, 9404, starts on page 241, that is the sewer collection system maintenance division. That overall budget is down this year, the personnel services is up, there was one request of employee in this division, they're asking for a new facilities maintenance crew supervisor position, and they're going to reclassify a pump mechanic position to a facilities maintenance crew supervisor, as part of some organizational change that Jordan wished to do. The operating budget was down, came down this year, and capital outlay also came down. Just like we had in the water system, we tried to invest some improvements into our sewer system each year, $250,000 for various sewer improvement projects. We have $250,000 towards rehabilitation of two sanitary sewer lift stations, which Jordan tries to do two a year, is that right, every year? So we have various ones throughout the city, so we try to do two each year. Replacement of a pickup truck and storage facility renovations at Township 7, $85,000. Moving on to the page 254, 255, just like in the water fund, you have the sewer fund debt service, accumulates all of the interest principal payments and notes that are, and revenue bonds that are associated with debt that they have, accumulates all of that into their debt service, as you can see, that's coming down as well. $3,068,000 in 1718 to $2.5 million last year to $2.393 this year. The sewer fund shared services, that's, once again, all the different divisions in the general fund that help out the sewer fund in their day-to-day operations and what they pay to that. 256 and 257 is the inter-fund transfers and supports, payment in lieu of taxes, just like the water fund, and this year, the contingency is zero, as we had a contribu- contribution, I think, was that the sewer capital reserve to balance that budget, Jay, or is that right? Is that where we took that money?
With the debt service.
Debt service.
Yeah, that's a debt service reserve fund contributing over.
Ultimately, this one zeroed out this year. Any questions on water or sewer? No increase in rates, too, either way.
Keep it that way.
I would like to see us do probably a public campaign in the next year on our channel through Facebook and talking about, you know, really what's going on with rates, what's going on with Duke, if Duke, you know, and I think we need to look, as long as we can be on par with Duke, because they're going to get a raise. I mean, they've already gone through to the utility commissions, we're waiting to see what that number's going to be, and, you know, depending on what's going to happen, was it next April, will that'll come down? Any increases?
Yeah, well, and keep in mind, our contract, and we're talking about electric here, this is not water sewer. No, that's fine, because we're getting ready to the electric fund. So this year, in the electric fund, just as a general overview, we did receive a wholesale rate increase that was passed down from, you know, Duke through Electric Cities to us. We have absorbed that into the budget this year through some rate stabilization fund usage, as well as some operating efficiencies that we've evaluated, so we are going to be able to absorb that rating, wholesale rate increase that we have this year. They are projecting another potential rate increase, and we'll find out more about that, just like we did this year around January, time that we're starting to put together a budget. If there is one, that would be passed along generally April 1, like it was this year. So at that point, we, and as you will remember, several months ago, we had this discussion, we actually tried to incorporate some of that projection into our costs and our projections for this year as well, and for the projected several years out, in hopes that we will be able to absorb that as well. But obviously, it's going to start eating in a lot faster to our rate stabilization fund, and we'll have to evaluate at that point. It's our hope that we can make it to 2025, whenever the debt service rolls off, for the asset sale, which is the defense debt, and if that happens, then we will see a significant decrease at that time, and we will be able to hopefully incorporate all of that into the budget. So, and it may be, what that would be is, is if we have, if we have an adequate enough of days cash on hand, if the rate stabilization fund, if that gets absorbed over this increase, we could potentially look at the days cash on hand, depending on what that, this year's wholesale rate increase could potentially be. If we do that, obviously, then we may be able to make it to 2025, but until we find out what that number is, it's kind of hard to predict. They're calling for 3%.
What's important on that number is, does the rate, the wholesale rate structure, is it in any way responsible for remediation of coal ash? And if that falls into the vertical integrated model of the retail customer, and then, if they're paying it, then that makes it advantageous to the power agency. So the question would be, does the city or the power agency want to look in to make them sure that part of the rate increases is not structured based on coal ash remediation, on part of the wholesale structure?
And they do evaluate that. We are still responsible for some of the coal ash, because obviously, we created some of that while we were owners of the asset, and we are wholesale customers of the asset. That's kind of covered in all of this, in the global Electric Cities budget that's passed along, and the rate that's passed along down to us, that's kind of incorporated, but I don't think that they can pass along unequal amounts.
Well, that's what I want to know, is that, is the only thing will be a pro-rata based on the ownership structure of Sharon Harrison, Brunswick, and the two coal-fired, is that all we're responsible for? Because if that's all we're responsible for, then our wholesale costs should remain constant, and their retail should go up, which would make us on parity in the next three, four, or five years with Duke, particularly when we get past the debt payoff in 2025, we're going to be a better rate structure than Duke.
I think we will. I think we will.
But I'm just saying that we need to entertain...
We need to educate our customers on that, too. I mean, I just think we need to educate them on that, once we can get to that.
Part of it is making sure somebody from council standpoint is making sure that we're not paying for something we shouldn't be paying for.
Another question with electric as we go forward, because, you know, this is going to be the year of resiliency, and we're going to hopefully be, you know, maybe getting a grant towards hiring somebody to do resiliency and whatever, is to look at, you know, how do we get utilities underground in many, you know, in some of the newer neighborhoods, of course, that's already happened, because that was a requirement of the new neighborhoods, but in the older neighborhoods, which many are in mine, and Alderman Harris and Alderman Best Ward's, you know, could there be a program through resiliency of putting utilities underground, because that certainly would help, you know, be of the stores.
Very expensive venture.
Understood.
If there's money is available, I'd love to have, just to kind of give you an idea, Matt has been crunching some rough numbers to move for just the Old Airport Road project that we're looking to do, because of the potential for us to look at locating a new substation out that way, we had talked about. If we just move the utilities, because the widening of the road is about $150,000?
$117,000.
$117,000. If we take all of that overhead along Old Airport Road and convert that to underground in preparation for that new substation providing power supply, there's a lot of pine trees and stuff as you go down through there, because it used to be old forestry land and everything else, it's about $700,000. So it's about a, it's about $600,000 difference just in that section.
I know it's not, not cheap, and I...
Definitely helps towards resilience, you're right.
Yeah, but if that person that's here, that's their job to look for monies and do that, but that should be something that we look at for the future and plan, and put some monies towards, or help to look at that, because I think that'll benefit us, because we are, people are talking about resiliency, and I know that's going to be the way we're going to move in the future.
The unfortunate thing is, is we still are in the control, we're still in the control of Duke somewhat, and their maintenance of their lines, and whether stuff falls on high-tension power lines, we could have the most resilient city and everything underground, but if something hits a high-tension power line that provides a power source into the city, then we're out.
And we totally understand that, but I think it would be a good move for us.
And that's one of the things that we're looking to do, too, is to make the connections, so if they're backfeeding from some other direction, we can pull off of that, versus where we may have some damage. So those are some of the things, I know Charlie has, it's high on his priority list for this upcoming year. So I guess let's just roll into the electric fund real quick, just like the water and sewer, you have the electric fund revenue and the electric fund expenditure summaries on page 260 through 262. Getting into the nuts and bolts of the electric administration department and the budget, you're looking at a little bit of a difference in the budget here for personnel services, he's looking to reclassify an engineering manager to transmission and distribution manager, and also add a business analyst, mainly because of some of the programs that Charlie is looking to do with analyzing some of the existing practices and future practices they have, as well as working with key account holders, some of our larger accounts being the community college, the hospital, you know, the...
BSH places.
Yeah, BSH, some of these other, some of our larger key account holders. So this person will be able to look into a lot of detail, do a lot of analysis with regards to our electric rate, probably do some of the stuff that the mayor was just talking about, ensuring that, you know, the rates that were being passed along from Nekempa are adequate and correct. Not a lot of change otherwise. Not a lot of change otherwise in that department, other than the position and associated costs with rates.
I'm just curious, we added one, oh, we haven't got, are we in electric administration?
Yes.
Okay, in electric administration, I'm just curious, we added one position, and it really upped, you know, the estimated for the entire year for salaries was two ninety-five and eighteen ninety, and it's gone to four ninety-two?
Yeah. Because Charlie was only there for a portion of the year, so the estimated entire year doesn't include a full year salary of the director. There's been some retirements out of that department as well, and those retirements were unsealed for quite some time, so that's the reason.
That's the reason. Thank you.
And you've got a grade twenty-five that's now a grade twenty-nine, so if they're using the midpoint for those, it's four different layers, I'm assuming, probably placing that.
It's actually, there's already somebody in a position that will be reclassified, so that would, it would just be the appropriate raise that would be based on the reclassification and additional duties that that person would absorb. But yes, that's essentially the three or four factors that you have there. Let's see, next item in your budget is distribution and operation maintenance. It's on page two eighty-one. Staffing remains the same, thirty-four. Personnel services, pretty static, other than just incorporate raises, a little bit of increase in the operating budget, small decrease in the capital budget overall. Capital, you're looking at replacement of a bucket truck, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and two hundred thousand dollars for a digger derrick that needs to be replaced for their typical operational duties. Those are replacements that happen on a regular basis, larger piece of equipment. There are additional, as you'll see on page two eighty-three, when you look at capital expenses, there's additional items other than the two that I highlighted, but oftentimes, we put them in capital because of the amount that they are. Oftentimes, they're broken down into individual components, and they actually operate more from an operating capacity, but we include them in the capital. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, we, due to accounting requirements, we have to capitalize them.
That's correct. But it is typical day-to-day, like, replacement stuff that they have to have, due to the cost of them, they would qualify as capitalized. Okay. Next item is ninety-six ten, power supply. The power supply, we have five positions in it. Those are typically your substation mechanics and electric substation superintendent. We have two capital items, eighty thousand for protective equipment, forty-two thousand for a pickup truck. The majority of that thirty-eight billion dollar budget is thirty-seven point eight of it, out of, is of the thirty-eight point three, is the actual power supply cost purchased for resale, and the wholesale power fixed cost. So if you look at the two items, which are seventy-four seven-ten and seventy-four seven-twelve, those are the two cost items that we get billed monthly from Electric Cities as one Next item you have is communications control. Communications has seven employees, it's remained the same from last year. Operating budget, we have forty-two thousand dollars included for outage management system annual support. We also are looking to have forty-four hundred dollars for the outage management system outgoing messages to notify people of outages and when their power's back on. Capital replacement of one pickup truck and SCADA server replacement. SCADA maintains our ability to see real-time what's going on in our system, so that's basically our computer software that we have that shows us what's going on. These are also our utility control system operators, that's the majority of the employees that are in this division, those are the ones that you talk to whenever there's an outage you would call, and they answer, and they keep an eye on the system twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Let's see, we've already done the utility business office, but since it's kind of housed in the electric department, I'm not going to go over that since we're covering it in finance. So if you go to pages three twenty-four and three twenty-five, or three twenty-six and three twenty-seven, we'll cover real quickly like we did water and sewer. So you can see, three twenty-four is the debt service. As you can see, that's staying kind of static, it's actually down from the estimated amount this year. Most of their debt is associated with revenue bonds that were implemented for some activities plus the AMI. And the electric fund shared services to the various departments. The transfer supports, which you have the payment in lieu of taxes, you also have the transfer support to the general fund that is allowed by North Carolina State statute. It's five percent of sales or three percent of assets. And we use the five percent of sales, which equates to two point six four four million dollars. And then transfer to other funds is the other six hundred thousand of that. And contingency, once again, is zero for this department's budget and this fund. Any questions on anything in the literature? All right, so that's...
Slow clap. We did better than we did last year.
I think it helped in the retreat that we brought everybody in at that point, kind of battled it out at that point over two days than it was.
My only comment would be, based on everything that we discussed, was there any major changes that needed to be done before we could approve the budget in a timely fashion? I'm talking to the board.
Fire trucks and...
So fire trucks.
And recycling.
Well, and the elevator, I need to figure out, I know we've got to get whatever, but I sure would like to have some contingency money or something.
So Matt is nearing completion of the RFQ. I know I spoke with him about that today, and he's going to be working with Lori to finalize that, so we'll get an RFQ out for consultants to come in and do some analysis on existing City Hall, where best to locate a potential elevator that could service and keep our costs at a minimum. And then if we want to look at the option, we can add that to the scope, too, if there's an expansion of City Hall and add on the services, but ultimately, he's working on the RFQ of that right now.
Okay. And also, too, it would be good to know how much insurance, well, is going to pay for the damage to the building, because I'd like to go ahead and get a program together of trying to fix this, fix this up. It looks so bad, and this is, you know, this is the seat of where everything in our city really comes from, and I think it's important that we at least keep the damage fixed and done and keep it up. I'd like to, you know, put some pictures on the wall, I'd like to do something to make this truly the gem that it is.
Replace the lines.
Yeah, I mean, we need, they, we hope to say be cleaned, you know?
Throw a little bleach on these, they'll be good.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, they're fine, they just need to be cleaned. Take them outside and...
We used to bleach them, because I don't have to clean them.
Yeah, that's exactly how...
Equity sweat day. Put some bleach on them to keep it moving.
Mark, I have a question for you before we close up, and it's going back to public buildings. Do you know if we have a fire alarm system throughout this building that is being monitored twenty-four hours a day?
I know we have a fire alarm system. We do not have a sprinkler system.
I know that.
And I do not think, I do not think it's monitored as well.
Isn't there smoke detectors in here?
Yeah, I'm sure there's some smoke detectors in here, but they're not being monitored.
We don't have, we don't have sprinkler systems.
I know, but where is the smoke detector in this room?
There's not one.
I don't think it's in the living space, right?
No, I mean, there should be some in this room.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's probably a real good idea because of the age of this building that we contact a security company or an alarm company and have them to evaluate this building. I mean, I know that there's probably, we used to monitor it, and I know that some of these smoke detectors that are probably up in the attic are probably twenty years old now, and they need to be changed out. And, I mean, we need to, the bottom line is, if this place was catch on fire, if we don't know about it early, it's going to be history. So we need to, we need to protect this building as much as we can by putting a smoke detector system in this building.
We do, and also, too, the camera system, we have no security system at this building whatsoever.
That's fantastic.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, it would be good to have cameras in the parking lot.
Let it get live tomorrow.
Amen.
You know, it would be good to have cameras in our parking lot. You know, I thought about it today, we're all upstairs, and I came into City Hall, and there's, you know, the one person downstairs, you know, sitting at the, at the desk, I mean, that's, you don't know, somebody, we, we would never hear anything, you know, if somebody came in and they got in trouble, we would, you know, there's nobody else downstairs. So I don't, you say if you're going to bring the security system, uh, security people in, let them just look at everything and give us an idea. We really need to, I guess, and I'm sure the police chief has told you that this building is very non-secured.
We just try to balance the budget.
We did, but we got, hey, we have fifty extra thousand dollars because we took that car away.
No, we don't, that's sitting there for rainy day funds.
Okay.
Hurricane season is upon us.
Actually, it was considered to be capital items, which we would have got debt.
Okay, sorry, chief, I thought I found some extra money.
So it's basically zero.
But chief, wouldn't you agree that this building is very not secured and needs to be as our most important public building?
You know what, since we have budget, I did want to say this, though. I think if we do have some extra money, I think this year, we do need to have like a huge employee appreciation where they, friends and family, I mean, well, family can come in, I feel like we need to do that, because everything that happened last year, I don't, you know, a lot of companies do that, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know where the money's going to come from, maybe donations, but I think it would be great for the employees, just for them to know how much we appreciate all of their hard work, to have something like that down at Eden Point and something like that, some hot dogs and hamburgers on the grill and something like that.
Bring a covered dish.
Yeah, bring a covered dish, bring a covered dish. I'm just saying, it would be nice for us to do that on a Saturday for the employees and their family, because they sacrifice a lot, the hurricane, it would just bring us together, just throwing that out there.
I wouldn't have a problem bring, have a covered dish, maybe the city could provide ice cream or something like that and drinks. I think that would be a minimal, you know, expense and do something like that.
I don't want, if the city going to do, why we got to do ice cream, why can't they do hamburgers and hot dogs?
Well, I'm saying, if everybody brings a covered dish, I'm trying to keep the costs down, Lord have mercy. You know, Bobby, I'm sure you can speak to the fact of, you know, employee...
I'd be willing to bet you, if you polled every city employee, they would say, give me a one percent additional increase in salary versus a hamburger, hot dog, that I feel like I'm...
It's just...
But, you know...
You feel me, right, Mark?
Are we through?
I had a couple of questions before we round up, anybody else has any questions? On the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was street lighting and public works, what, what is that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
The power cost.
Oh, that's the power cost, okay. Is there's any assets included? The other thing, I want to kind of give the board a hit up, the only thing I've heard during this budget season is expect under the public comments when the public hearing is held, there will be subsistence concern about the continued undersizing of drainage culverts around the city. There are several areas, more in particular around Flora Heights, where a very undersized culvert is almost causing flooding conditions in twelve-foot elevated areas when a hundred feet away the water is two feet low in a given storm, all because of undersized culverts. That's the main thing that I'm hearing that citizens might have some input during the public hearing process, is inadequate undersized drainage culverts in the city. Let's see, that was pretty much, no other question I had out of your four hundred and seventy-three employees, or you feel like that's a good type of figure, and that March of next year, you'll be running four hundred and sixty-eight or four hundred and seventy-three employees, you're not going to be running at four hundred and fifty, because I know we've typically been running at least four sixty, so I want to make sure in this budget, that if there's any positions in there that are not needed, that, you know, several years ago, the board looked into a lot of budgeted positions that were never filled, so I think, I think it's a pretty tight figure for where we are, where we're going toward this this year.
Yeah, I think, I think it is, Mayor. Most of the positions and vacancies either are your typical turnover positions in police, you had quite a few, and like I said, this number is entirely based on, the number you saw in there that was the existing conditions as of the date we printed this, was whether or not they were vacant or not. A lot of that's either turnover or retirements. Bobby Boyd, the fire department, had a ton of retirements this year, so if you had have done this budget document three months earlier, he would have had six vacancies in that department. It just really depends on when we do this, but I think that's a pretty good one.
And there is the item number seven, public comment on above sections, I'm not aware of any public, any of the public here. I will call it this time for number seven, if there's any public comment, if anybody would like to make any on any of these sections.
I don't see none.
I don't think you're going to have any.
I don't know, Jordan's smiling, I don't know.
They're proud that we did it this year.
I'm going to make a motion that we...
Well, let me ask you, since we've completed this process, I don't think we need to have a meeting tomorrow, correct?
So the way we advertised this, and Clark, please correct me if I'm wrong, the way we advertised this was a Board of Alderman work session for April the thirtieth and May the first, one P M. daily, so if the board is fine with where everything's at right now, then you can adjourn this meeting without the need for tomorrow's meeting.
So moved.
Is that correct, Brenda? Could you confirm that to Scott?
Yes, and if there's a need to reconvene tomorrow, then you would just recess this meeting.
Point, did we get, who was the second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, point of order, Mr. Kinsey had a motion that fell for like a second, so your motion took precedent over his without a second. His was called for, you're a German, but yours included a German and no meeting tomorrow, and you had a second, is that correct?
You okay with that, Brenda?
Um, any other, any questions about that item? I want to favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, say aye.
Slow clap, we graduated.
Of course, you know what, I just...